We'll begin tonight on my. Thanks, everyone, for coming to our study session this evening. We will start with our public forum. And I will begin by reading our public forum rules. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names appear on the sign up sheet at the time the meeting is called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided a maximum of three minutes, so 15 minutes total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defend individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege if speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the board, please submit those items to the executive assistant, Martha Walts. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The board will not review handouts during the public comment period. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Additionally, given some feedback we have received, we feel the need to share a few more words with the public. The open forum is a safe space for our community members to share their experiences, concerns, and feedback. In this safe space, we strive to protect First Amendment rights while showing respect for everyone. We would like to ask the community to be respectful, not only in speaking at open forum, but also in listening. We, as a community, have an opportunity to elevate the conversation and create healthy spaces for dialogue and opposing views. Demonstrating this for and in our community shows how we can all collectively do better. Thank you for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged in our PLSAS community. Tonight, we do have five speakers. The first is Bill Markert, who is speaking tonight on Constitution and Citizenship Day.
Good evening, school board directors and Superintendent Thomas. Each year, our country recognizes Constitution and Citizenship Day on September 17th. This day commemorates the formation and signing of the U.S. Constitution by 39 brave men on September 17th, 1787, recognizing all who are born in the United States or who have become citizens by naturalization. Congress encourages all American adults and children to observe this important day in our nation's history. In fact, back in December 2004, Congress passed H.R. 4818, a federal law, in which Section 111B states, "Each educational institution that receives federal funds for a fiscal year shall hold an educational program on the United States Constitution on September 17th of such year for the students served by the educational institution." This federal law does not distinguish between elementary, secondary, or college-level institutions, so it must be interpreted that it applies to all levels of education. Additionally, the law is not specific in the definition of educational programs, so there's lots of options in what instruction teachers can provide students. Lastly, our own state statute, Section 12842B, allows for school districts to conduct programs to honor our Constitution. This year, Constitution and Citizenship Day falls on a Sunday. However, federal law allows the commemoration activities or the program to be held up to a week before September 17th or a week after that date. I, as well as other residents of our community, are requesting the Prior Lake Savage School District celebrate Constitution and Citizenship Day at our schools this year and for the years to come. Because we are not curriculum experts, we ask that Dr. Edwards and the Teaching and Curriculum Committee determine age-appropriate ideas that can be rolled out to each of our schools. There's some great resources for teachers to use to teach about Constitution, including the National Center for Constitutional Studies, Patriot Academy, PragerU. Some of you, if you're old enough, you remember some of the old Schoolhouse Rocks that, you know, you learned the preamble or you learned how our form of government's work. There's also a website called Constitution.net that has some great examples of age-appropriate activities for children in grades K through 3, 4 through 7, and 8 through 12. To sum up, celebrating Constitution and Citizenship Day at school is a great way for our students, teachers, and administrators to demonstrate their love for the United States of America and the blessings of freedom our founding fathers secured for us. It is something we can and we should all be united in. So please let our, if you can, please let our community know what you decide to do to commemorate this special day at the next school board meeting on September 11th. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Sarah Anderson, speaking on academic achievement.
Good evening. I speak as a community member, only, not as a member of any other group, as some in the community at times insinuate. My concern is for our students and their academic learning, and I think this is a reason that we can all come together on this topic and agree. As you know, the MDE released the MCA scores last week, and they are a bit concerning. As a home educator, I certainly understand standardized testing is not the only measure of student performance, but it is one useful measure to identify weaknesses and trends. For example, Prior Lake test scores have dropped an alarming amount since 2015. In all three subjects, they have gone down 13% to 25% in such a short period of time, and that's concerning, and I don't think it's just because of COVID. It's easy to fall into a trap of comparison and say, well, at least we're not as bad as them. But our district lays behind most comparable metro school districts. Why not compare ourselves to ourselves or to the measure, the standard of the test and the scoring of the test? What are the reasons that these scores are falling at an alarming rate? Is it safety issues? Is it bullying? Is it too much cellphone use? Is it the fact that there's not enough time being devoted to teaching the subjects in the classroom? Are there attendance issues? I exhort you to look critically at the data and search for prevailing reasons that our test scores are falling. I know many in the community are willing to help in various ways, and we all might then see improvement together. I look forward to addressing these results and moving forward together with solutions. For example, one solution is tutoring programs. However, I know two people who tried to get involved. One never received a response to her overly qualified application that she sent in, and another one was told that there was a high number of minimum hours, or he couldn't volunteer, and it was a very complicated process. So maybe that's something that could be improved to help us help the students. I would like to see consideration given to prioritizing academics and not all the other noise that takes place in the classroom and distracts from learning. Thank you very much for listening and considering my words.
Our third speaker tonight is Kate Cravens. The topic is being woke and the parental rights and transparency.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also appreciate the time and the effort that the school board members are putting into making our schools the best possible, and I also want to acknowledge that we're about to start a new school year, and I and many others are hoping for the very best for our teachers and educators moving forward. I come to you as an alumni parent, whose three boys were all educated here, from kindergarten through graduation. I was a volunteer, particularly in reading programs during their years, worked closely with teachers on reading testing, as well as leading reading groups. Education-wise, I have, I am trained as a historian. I also have a master's degree in teaching, and I formerly, at one point in my career, was a teacher of U.S. History to 9th and, excuse me, to 10th and 11th graders. And I bring all of that up just to show that that's the background that is affecting the things that I want to talk about. In our last session, Mr. Starlee spoke about the word woke and stated that to be woke is to be born again. And I want to turn the conversation to what it actually means to be woke. It is a term that comes out of the African-American community, and it means to be aware of racial prejudice and discrimination. In more recent years, it has been extended beyond the African-American community to include other communities that are considered disadvantaged, but essentially, to be woke is not about a religion. To be woke is to actually have knowledge, historical knowledge, and it's also about having empathy. And so whenever I hear anyone in our community, especially someone coming before our school board, to argue that it is a bad thing to be woke, it concerns me because it essentially sounds to me like it is someone who is actually arguing against knowledge and against empathy. And I exhort you, as board members and leaders of our entire education community, to, in fact, support empathy and knowledge, because accurate historical knowledge and empathy are key to having good citizens, and that is part of the purpose of a public school is to create good citizens. I also want to acknowledge that we literally need to be compliant with state standards and state law, which does require diversity and equity. And so I don't want to see anything, any kind of decision made here that would affect the education of our students and potentially affect funding. And granted, most of the funding here is not coming locally to support our schools. It is coming from the state, and I think we need to remember that. And finally, I don't think, this is personal opinion, that you need to consider the parental rights and transparency document that was given last time.
Thank you. You've hit your time limit.
And I'll stop.
Thank you.
And I'll let others carry on.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Nelson. She is speaking on policies 203 and 209.
Thomas, and board directors. I have three children who attended PLSAS, and I'm an aunt to four students in the district, as well as a community member and a taxpayer. Thank you for all you do to make PLSAS an incredible district and for your tireless efforts to build bridges. It is being noticed. I'd like to thank you in advance for remembering that the school board resolution committing to equity and inclusion is to be used to view all policies through an equity lens, including 203 and 209. The public and binding resolution includes a commitment to training as board and individuals to strengthen your competence to oversee the district in becoming equitable and inclusive, supporting the superintendent in continuing to lead priorities to advance equity and inclusion, and encouraging and supporting educators as they seek to adapt instructional practices, to respond more effectively to the needs and aspirations of all learners, and to demonstrate their belief in the value of each student. A school board is self-governing, and that is a tremendous responsibility. If you don't hold each other accountable to your policies and ethics, there's no higher authority. This is not just the work of the board chair, who carries extra responsibilities during and between meetings. It is the work of all seven of you. Keeping the equity resolution in mind, I ask you to think about the following key pieces in the policies being reviewed tonight. A board member's accountability is to the entire district and supersedes any loyalty to other advocacy or interest groups, to membership on other boards, and to personal interests. Board members shall exercise honesty in all written and personal interactions, because misinformation can cause harm. Board members shall protect the integrity and positive image of the district. Please hold each other accountable for comments at the table, on social media, or in the press that work against this. Once the board has taken action, board members shall support the official position of the district, represent all constituents' interests, without preference to special interest or partisan politic groups. Once you're sworn in, your constituents include all, not just those who voted for you. And do not individually render judgments on the performance of the superintendent or staff. It is not acceptable to publicly call out individuals and practices. The self-governing policy items I called out are more important than ever, as special interest groups are working against the commitment to equity in public schools, and allegiance to those groups above the district can work against this very board. For example, the Minnesota Parent Alliance is suggesting board candidates can take a pro-human pledge of fairness, promising they will treat everyone equally, disregarding all differences, which means they are not acting equitably. The joyful warriors of Moms for Liberty use very polite and innocuous sounding wording, but can carefully undermine efforts of public schools to create safe and welcoming environments for all. Please remember the already established commitments in the board's equity resolution as you review your policies this evening, because all your constituents are looking to you for leadership.
Thank you. And last, tonight, we have Emily Gillespie, speaking on policy 203.
Good evening, Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, and members of the board. My name is Emily Gillespie. I'm a 20-year resident of Savage, and my husband and I are raising our two kids here. Both our kids have gone to Prior Lake Savage area schools for their entire education, and as of next week, they will both be students at Prior Lake High School. So just as a sign, I want to wish a great start of the school year to all administrators and teachers and staff, and just say how grateful we are. My comments tonight are about policy 203, specifically Section 5.12, which says, "Board members shall maintain focus on district mission, core values, vision, and strategic directions." I'm pretty familiar with the school district's mission statement, but I am not so familiar with the district's core values, vision, and strategic directions, so I confess I had to look those up to refresh my memory a little bit on those. There was one core value that particularly caught my attention as I was thinking about school board operating norms, and that is the core value of respect, which is defined by the district as valuing ourselves, each other, and our world across all differences. Valuing each other and our world across all differences is a core value that has lived out when the school board, administration, teachers, and staff celebrate and honor differences. It is a value that has turned into action when you use your words and actions to show your support for individuals who differ from you, particularly when they belong to a marginalized group. This core value cannot be lived silently. It comes to life only when students and other members of our community can see and hear that you value others across all differences. I do see evidence of this core value being lived out loud in our district. I see it in the great diversity of affinity groups and student clubs, where differences can be a powerful driving factor to bring students together, to form communities, and support each other. I see it when teachers display signs of support for students from marginalized communities. I hear it when board members use their voices to advocate for all students, and when teachers and administrators make sure all students can see themselves reflected in the classroom and in materials. Given the directive in policy 203, I ask you, as a board and as individual members, to keep this core value in focus as you discuss these policies. Our school community needs to hear and see how you show respect by valuing yourselves, each other, and the world across all differences.
Thank you. Thank you to all our speakers tonight. We always appreciate your time and effort. We will move on to our study session purpose agenda this evening. I'll pass it on to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, board directors, tonight, for our work session. It's our opportunity to come together with board, with the board and administration to really dive deep into key agenda areas. Tonight, we'll be going through a variety of operations to include some financial updates around our audit levy certification and our standard enrollment update that we provide to the board. We are also going to share just high-level themes of what we see in terms of data request fulfillment. We'll review the framework for the superintendent evaluation, as we discussed back in July, and a proclamation for our payroll staff appreciation week coming up. And then, lastly, we'll close down with some reviews of board policy 203 and 209. So that is the agenda and the purpose for our conversations this evening.
Thank you, and we have our board working document under District Governance and Policy that guides our work to reference this evening. So we will start with the oversight of operations with the 2223 audit update by Director Frederiksen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, Superintendent, board members. An audit update is we are in the final stages of having our audit complete. The audit firm is just finalizing their last few items that they want to double-check on, and we should be expecting the audit report from MMKR within the next few weeks. That is all I have for the audit.
Okay. Any questions?
Tammy, can you go over the schedule for when we actually get the presentation from the auditor and vote on it?
We haven't got a firm date yet. They are, as I say, getting the last few pieces together, and then they have to review everything and write the actual audit comments. We are fairly certain that we'll have the presentation at our October board meeting. If at all possible, we'll try to do it before that, but for sure, the audit at the October board meeting.
Are you going to be ready to go over it during this study session in September so we can vote on it in October? Or is it going to be...
That is our hope.
Okay.
We express that to our audit firm, and they're doing the best they can.
I get it. Thank you.
Then we've got the levy certification update also. I'm sorry, did anyone else have any questions? I don't mean to push ahead. Okay. Levy certification.
The levy certification information system has been up now for a couple weeks. We have till the end of this week to enter our final data in there, which we are working on. The Department of Education will be running the levy certification report on September 11th. We're hoping to give you a more detailed update at that board meeting, but again, they're just running it on September 11th, so we will give you an update as soon as we possibly can.
Any questions? Questions from the board? The next item is our enrollment update.
Enrollment update, as of last Friday, we are 36 students short of what our estimate is for the 2324 school year. So they're furiously working on families that are doing their last-minute enrollments, and we should be right around what our estimate was. Our kindergarten enrollment is coming in a little less than what we had projected, but again, we're right on target for what we anticipate our enrollment to look like.
So Tammy, I have a question. So is that what the difference between the 554 that are actually registered on the bottom of the grid here versus the 599 estimated? And what's the difference between your, the 2223 column and the 2324? I mean, obviously, I know the difference in the years, but can you explain why it says estimate on both of those?
So we have, do not have the final enrollment numbers for the 2223. MDE is always two years behind, so they're just doing their actuals for 2122, and then they will continue to have 2223 as an estimate, but for the next two years, they'll be updating it as they get more information through all of our Mars reports and our ADM reports and all of the STARS report, everything that we report to them. So they're always two years behind before we actually get final, final numbers.
I have a few questions. The big rise, or I guess the top two, from, and realizing, that was one of my questions too, why last year was an estimate, and that explains that. But for second graders and 11th graders, I just wondered if they had the biggest jump, and I didn't know if, anecdotally even, we knew why.
Keep in mind that this year's second graders are last year's first graders, so we have that progression that goes, kind of, each year forward. We'd have to do some more digging to see exactly what the, and again, these are estimated numbers.
Sure.
But we could certainly look into some of those grade-level discrepancies, but we've been pretty close to being on what our projection was for this year. But I will look and see if there's grade-level discrepancies that we can explain.
Might not be. It just stood out to me as those were the two biggest jumpers, I guess, increases. Okay.
Tammy, I have a question for anyone else who's done. Usually, we do experience some percentage drops during the year, so we made the estimate and we're just short of the estimate. Did that estimate include potential percentage drops during the year?
We have kind of leveled off. We were assuming that last year there'd be a reduction. This year, it would pretty much remain steady, and then next year, we're hoping it'll start going back up again. But it's, I mean, it's very close to being on target for this year.
Other questions or comments from board? Thank you, Tammy. The next item for discussion is our data request fulfillment. It's a report from Director Musman.
I'm so sorry. Well, you're getting set up. I did have one more question that allowed.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Absolutely. I kept thinking it was a separate thing. I just have a question on the class size targets. There's two grade fives, and I didn't know if, I'm guessing it was just a duplicate.
Yeah, the second grade five is a grade six.
Should be a grade six. Grade six, okay. Sorry. I'll get that corrected. Thanks, that's all. Sorry, Kristi.
No worries. Good.
Same target discussion, Cam? As grade five or different?
Yeah, it should just be a duplicate, the elementary, just K5, and then middle school is a different target.
Okay. So that's just a duplicate line? Yeah. Okay. Not grade six. Okay. Which makes sense.
All right, Kristi.
Okay. Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, members of the board, tonight, I have some data for you about data requests. Just wanted you all to have some awareness that we do track this internally as a district, and in your board packet tonight, you'll see just some high-level trend data. This first slide shows the four-year trend data in terms of when we receive data requests throughout the school year. As you can tell, it's very sporadic, although the last couple years, especially that dark orange, burnt orange line, represents this latest year, where we were starting to see much more activity in the, sort of, that late summer, early fall, and then again in spring. Then, if we go to the next slide, this slide shows that the overall number of requests have risen, although they've become more complex and time-consuming to fulfill. That 2223 year, that's the latest data that we have, and that is just becoming more and more time-consuming with requests involving electronic correspondence. And then, finally, this is not in your board packet, but I added this late Friday afternoon just to kind of show generally what sorts of themes and topics that we see overwhelmingly that... The biggest majority is electronic correspondence, followed by requests about library media materials, and then it's a little bit of a tie between parents requesting information about their own student, military requests for contact information for 11th and 12th grade students, as well as requests for financials. So that's just really high level, but just thought you might like to see snapshot of how we track data requests in districts.
What would all be in electronic? Can you give us some examples?
So that would be emails, just a wide variety of emails that people ask for. That usually ends up being hundreds of copies, sometimes thousands of copies of emails.
From administration, from teachers, from, I mean, you name it.
Yeah, all across the board.
And are the hours the fulfillment time? Is that in? I mean, what's the bulk of that?
So the majority of the time for me personally is spent on redacting. We have to make sure that we go through, follow state statute, and if there's any private information that needs to be redacted. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, but we have to touch every piece of data to make sure that we're following state statute. And then, of course, if senior leaders get involved, if there's something I need to research a little bit more, then that's all of our time too.
Can you go back to the fulfillment question? Time frame? What does that measure again? To sort of, you know, you're just giving it a...
So I track approximately how many hours it takes me. That doesn't mean that's chargeable time, but it's how much time that I spend fulfilling that request.
And are you solely responsible for this?
It does fall under my purview and Emily Herman's, but again, like depending on what the request is, I might need to work with our IT department or a senior leadership team if it's something that's involved in curriculum or a program that I'm not as seen to.
I would, if I may, I would say 90% of the data requests go exclusively to Kristi. And just coming in, you know, it's a department of two, Kristi and Liz, and you saw the previous chart where there was a significant spike with the numbers of, you know, the times of the year. And again, when you see these spikes, particularly in the spring, it couldn't be the most challenging time, I mean, you couldn't get any more challenging staffing budget trying to stay abreast of, you know, communicating all of that to our stakeholders. So I will say, just observing, we as a senior team have leaned in to help as well where necessary and when necessary. So just want to acknowledge it's pretty much a one-person show.
Well, it may be a one-person show, you're only counting your, but you don't go and gather the data necessarily from the individual departments. That is still not reflected in that fulfillment time? It's only your time?
It's only my time that is reflected in there, so.
So it's actually more?
Yeah.
Okay.
When looking at this trend from 2019, 2020 school year, the following year, it's a, you know, it has a steep increase over the last few years, and I think that...
Is it the slide or the previous?
No, I'm looking at the slide.
The mine, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, and also that, the next slide, because it just shows the number of requests, right? Just really increasing over the last few years. And when I see this information, my initial, or my gut reaction is to say, okay, well, what's happening and what can we do about it? And I know that bringing this information to us is the starting process to try to figure out how we can move forward. I don't know if you have any more information that you can give, like what may have been happening over the last four years, four school years, three school years, that has, you know, warranted just such an increase in these data requests?
You know, I think it's pretty hard to say, just because it's such a varied, varied request, although in speaking with counterparts in other districts, I think they also have seen a trend and an increase in data requests. Certainly not in every single district, but I think we're just sort of seeing that around the metro, so I'm guessing that trend is going to continue.
And going forward, what do you, you know, I guess, what as a district can we do going forward? What might be some, you know, what might be the follow-up out from this increase? More another position that needs to be filled? Like what could we possibly be looking at?
You know, I think potentially looking in that direction. I think, you know, it's just taking me more and more away from the active communications. And at the same time, you know, we believe transparency is very important and want to be making sure that we're fulfilling these requests in a timely manner. So, yeah, there's some things you've got to get somewhere.
Right, yeah. Is the time limit, generally speaking? As I'm sure it's...
Your response?
Yes, thank you. I'm sure it depends on the request.
It does.
Or doesn't.
My understanding that is if it's a parent asking for information about their student, we have 10 days. If it's beyond that, if it's something that doesn't involve a parent and their student, we have to respond in a timely manner. So for me, what that means is I'll acknowledge receipt of the data request and then give that person kind of an idea of when, how long I think it's going to take, and then if it takes longer, just keeping in communication with them so that they know what's going on.
I would say also, because it's a singleton, basically, there might be a very easy data request, but it just sits in the queue because of the amount of larger data requests that are in front of that data request, and that's the most fair way that Kristi and I think others have been able to try to prioritize. Now, we, again, this is where we might push in and say, okay, let me grab this, or, you know, Dan grabs that or whatever. But generally speaking, I think it kind of backlogs. And then there have been situations where data requests, I mean, Amy, to get to your point, Director Gollin, to get to your question about kind of what do you think might be going on, I think we have a lot of mistrust around the community, period. And I'm not saying just with the district, I'm saying with each other. And so we are getting data requests, people's data requests of those data requests. It's this daisy chain, and we're literally managing community feuds that are happening from aspects of our community. And I think that is a, that's a real challenge, and that's a real concern of mine as a superintendent, that this is how we are using top talent in our district to kind of manage some of that. Now, that's not all of it, but that's a rising amount of data requests coming in. I believe that every, I'll speak for our district, I believe we will always have the opportunity to be better in our communication, to be better with our transparency, to alleviate anything that we may contribute to a level of wonder, mistrust, et cetera. So I fully own that and accept that responsibility, and that has been the platform that our team has been committed to since I've been here, and it will just continue to expand into different domains. Finance was a big one. We heard that coming in. This year is going to be about academic transparency. So we know what is within our control, but my frustration, honestly, if I could just be very free in my speaking, is the kind of daisy chain data requests that are coming in. And then lastly, because some of these are thousands, literally thousands of emails that come, that may be coming in, and then I think what would be helpful, and I guess this is my ask of the community, who may watch this back, we're legally obligated to provide these requests. I want to be very clear, I don't care what the request is, no matter how impassioned I might personally be about that request, or how offended I might be about that request, we are legally obligated to deliver that data. And it would be helpful for the lean team who's responding to these to be as crystal clear for exactly what you're looking for. If there is a word, if there is a title, if there is a dollar amount, I mean, and I'm not trying to be persnickety here, but that can take this thing from a search way out here to a search way in here. So my ask to the community is, we want to serve and support you, your requests, we're legally obligated, but help us help you, because this is, quite frankly, a real challenge for us. Is that...
Well, I would add super fast, my opinion, it is guaranteed that we are required to do this, which I appreciate. I would just ask people to say, how is this important and valued for kids and learners? Like I just think if you get lost and you can't answer that question, then maybe stop for a second and say, is this good for kids and education? Just period. Or is it my own personal battle? You know, like just that would be my only thing, because we spend so much time at this table talking about, is this good for students? Boy, then if that's our criteria, I would ask our community to use some of that same.
Director Thomas, can I ask you to elaborate on something too?
Right.
And I'm sorry for laughing, but are you saying that part of that is people in the community using the school district almost as a proxy between other groups?
Yes, that is exactly what I'm saying.
And we're...
So if you have a data request of the district...
In the room.
I will get a data request for your data requests for a different individual, and I might even have a third to ask for that person's yours and the whys of you requesting us. So I've got this daisy chain of people, and again, factions within our community of perspectives coming forth to kind of go at odds with one another, and it's happening on the backs of district staff.
Hi, well, that is, well, first of all, considering everyone's concerned about our finances and fiscal responsibility to use valued resources for that, does seem illogical from the standpoint of, but also when there's data requests of data requests and things like that, I would call it, like Julie just said, I would call upon the community to say, wait a minute, you know, we're supposed to be the adults in the room. But the other thing is, is there anything, I'm not sure about the privacy rules on this, but is there any way to create a list of the data requests by people, or is it supposed to be confidential so the community can kind of see this? I mean, if that's going on and that's actually happening, which I have no doubt that it is, given the sharp spike, can we do something to be more transparent on that as well to show how the district administration's time is actually being spent? Is that a possibility, or is that a violation of the privacy of the people submitting?
I think that's something I would have to inquire about. I understand...
Director Thomas, can I ask that very quickly? Director Franz, we have to be very cautious with that. There are different data requests that are public, and I wouldn't want to create something that would just emphasize what we're speaking to here today. I think this was our attempt to start bringing this to attention, that we have needs in our community, that we need to properly resource, and internally wanting to give you that data of what those needs look like right now. We can do a deeper dive into where those needs are coming from and if we can be proactive in different ways, but I would exercise caution on putting it out there too far where we could potentially be causing a discrepancy in some private requests that are out there that we wouldn't be sure.
That's totally understandable, particularly with students and staff and things like that.
So I think this high level, sorry to interrupt, but just to, I think this high level data presents the full picture without the data potentially being skewed if we're only sharing out the ones that we can.
I'm, while I'm concerned about Kristi's time, no doubt, I'm also concerned about the other administration use of time to do this, and I'm also concerned about the pattern, because if we aren't being transparent, there's a lot of people asking for the same data and it's not out there. Can we then look at that actual, the detail of the request and make sure that we are being more transparent so that the work involved is, we've been pointing to our website, pointing to the dashboard, something to alleviate that, because these are full-time equivalent hours. We're already incredibly lean in almost every aspect of our administration and our teaching staff. And, you know, and the members that, the people that actually attend our school and depend upon it for their services, you know, they deserve the best, they deserve the highest level of full-time equivalent hours percentages that can be dealt to the students and to their families in our school districts. So highlighting this in some way would, I think, may help us be more transparent or at least get the pattern of things, but also highlight how, you know, the full-time equivalent hours are being used. Make sure they're being used for the most appropriate manner.
I would just like to add, I had a couple of different takeaways from this. If you could go back to the other slide. So when I look at the number of requests, number of requests, if I'm reading it, it's like right under 50, and then it's a little bit above 50, so maybe 50, 60 requests. The actual number of requests doesn't look like it's increased that dramatically, but like you said, the time to fulfill them. Now, under Minnesota's, Minnesota statute 1303, which is access to government data, it specifically states that we have to have DAXA data that is easily accessible. And so to me, that tells me there might be some sort of issue with the system or the process. Is there something that from an IT standpoint we can do that to make that information more easily accessible so that your, because your hours of time have gone up significantly compared to the number of requests that we've received?
I think in some regards I can. Some of the requests I get will be pages and pages of requests that have maybe 10 to 15 requests, like all in one request, so those take, there's just no way to, you just have to get through them. The email, there are software programs out there that can, you know, automatically deduplicate emails and batch download them and even do some auto-redacting. That's something to explore. It's still, I would argue, requires a human to make sure you go through and not just rely on the software to do the proper redacting, but there's tools to make things a little bit faster.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have one other thought.
Just in that same thought stream, just to respond, you're right, and I think what has happened, I'm not going to call it a tactic, but I think what's happening is a multiple request within, that's coded within a singleton. So that number of 52 or whatever it might be could be a little higher, because, I mean, just recently, I saw a data request come in, but it's like 10 different requests that are within that one request. The second thing I would say is the complexity, which is why I spoke to our community, like, what exactly are you looking for? Because that would help, I think, with efficiency. If you want to know about expenditures between a certain date range, or just like literally that granular, because it would, I think, help decrease the time that it takes to get through, I think, thousands of pages versus 100 pages. That's why I was speaking to that, where I think you're seeing that spike.
And then secondly, I'd like to add, just when I received this information, I went back and did a little bit of, you know, checking on my own, like what creates the need for, why do people do data requests? And like you said, it's because of lack of trust and transparency. So I think if you go back to the, I think, the next slide where you see finances being a big chunk, I think having our dashboard up is really going to help add transparency to our finances. But again, with all the different areas, and thank you for pulling that together with these themes, but the more transparent we can be with our community, I think it's going to help to be able, we're going to see the data request come down.
Any other comments?
I have a clarifying question. Is for the library media, the 13% there, bottom right? This is a data request for, who knows why you put it in the library media category. Is that separate then from maybe some book challenges that like you get, Dr. Edwards, that come in through a separate form? Is, or are those... Or are those considered a data request and put in this percentage of the pie? It's just a clarifying.
So some of them have sort of entered that route, looking for library materials, and then some have resulted in a challenge. I'll have to go back and look to see, I would second that out, but those are, that represents requests for list of books, as well as process and information involving the process of our library materials. Music books.
I want to jump on Jess's, just to, because you've got electronic is 36%, basically, finance is only 8.7%. Are those truly mutually exclusive, or do we have a lot of electronic requests for financial data, or contractor data, or surveys, or whatever?
There might be a little bit of overlap, but not much.
Okay.
Usually, the request is, and people don't have to say why, you know, they're looking for things. It would be helpful, because I could narrow that down, and I'm willing to look up anything for people, that's public information. But it's just literally usually a domain, or an exact email address that they're looking for, correspondence within a date range.
And I have another question. Can we legally change the data requests so that one request, because that other bar graph then would be very misleading, as you pointed out, that the number of requests don't exactly translate to what's actually in each request?
That's true.
So is there a way to say, one data request per, you know, output, or something like that, so that we can get a more accurate understanding? Because also, to try and break down something that is one data request sheet, but then it's multiple, multiple requests in there.
Yeah.
And you would think that, I understand that if somebody's really looking for the information, getting it all together, but usually, once you get a little bit of information, one question begets another, right? So usually, you're looking at these things almost in chronological order, or in a logical order, and therefore, at the end of that, then you realize, I didn't ask for what I really needed, and it can start all over again.
That is, that is correct. You've just articulated exactly that large blue column, that dark blue column. That's exactly what is happening on many occasions. And I'm not faulting people, you know, but that's why I just can't emphasize enough. If you would talk with us more specifically about exactly what you're looking for, the more detail we have, the easier it's going to be for us to not send a community member, you know, kind of in their own unintentional wild goose chase, only to come back and say, well, that led me nowhere. Now, look at these 10 queries, you know, or look at this, you know, whatever. So I think that's going to be an important aspect of our community. And yes, I think the transparency is key, as I stated, and I think it's important for this community, to figure out how to work through some of their concerns with each other outside of the district resources. That would also be helpful for our staff. And I think that would bring that number down too.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on to our superintendent evaluation process. So as explained in the board professional development session, the board is requested to approve the implementation of a meaningful superintendent eval process for 2324. That approval will take place on September 11th at our board meeting, and the attached document is for Dr. Thomas to bring forward today.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Crosby and Board Directors. So we had this initial discussion and a little bit more robust examples of things back in July, and as you all recall, this is being realigned to the MSBA framework, which is tied to state standards of superintendent competencies. And so that evening, you all were reflecting on your board self-review, and I think I was also bringing back my end-of-year evaluation, as well as setting forth the new evaluation in the new MSBA framework. And we settled as a team to look at Minnesota Standard III, which is Communication and Community Relationships, which I believe I could be stating, was, I think, aligned to some of your own self-reflection conversations. And then, standard number six, around teaching and learning. This is something that I've been very upfront about with the board, upfront with our community and our staff, that last year, I kind of count as a recovery, fully uninterrupted, fully back, and just adjusting to, okay, this is how we do school again. And getting back to our core academic framework is going to be absolutely critical, so I really wanted to hone my work and the work of the staff throughout the district in that standard. And the elements that you see, let's see, that you see listed in that document, there were about six in each, and MSBA recommends you pick about two standards, and then you pick several elements from those standards. And so what you see tonight are Minnesota Standard III, Communication and Community Relationships, looking at standard 3.0A, 3.0B, and 3.0F as the three focused elements that all of my submissions of artifacts and progress towards these standards will be evaluated against. And I didn't, oh, and then, I'm sorry, and then, standard number six, the same, you see the total elements that they have, and I focused in on 6B, C, and E. And I believe on your document, it might say 3B. That was a typo, so I apologize. I should say 6B, Under-School Improvement. And this is just the natural, oh, you know what, it got, it might have gotten changed if you're in board book now. Sorry, it got changed. So I apologize. If you printed it off, you have, it says 3B. But the public has an updated version here. So again, this is our bread and butter. This is an area of high emphasis and focus. And then also, one of the areas that I wanted to center in, as I shared last year, I had some, I declared some growth goals for my own personal growth, becoming a better leader. And I really want to hone my coaching skills, and I think that's a significant aspect to ensure that all staff are being developed to being their best. And there are formal frameworks that we can take, and this is, now, I actually want to credit a lot of our content and instructional coaches. I had a really good meeting with them towards the tail end of last school year, and their hunger for instructional coaching frameworks really inspired me to say, you know what, if that's what I'm hearing from staff whose job is to specifically coach, and they want to make teachers better in the classrooms, or pairs, et cetera, well, how can I model that and join them in that area? And that was really inspiring, so again, thank you to that group. But I think it also makes sense. My role as superintendent is very far removed from the day-to-day instruction of an individual student, but I work with a lot of individuals throughout our district that I can coach and develop to become better in their particular function. So in turn, this is going to impact our student improvement, or our student learning outcomes as well. So you see that, and then you see the mid-year evaluation form, and then the summative. And what you're looking at is a Word document. Jenny Zambusch is working with Qualtrics, and this will be digitized within the Qualtric system, similar to what you had last year. You would then be given a secure link, and you would go through more of an electronic template form for you to populate. I would upload and attach artifacts as well to demonstrate my evidence towards said standards. And then we have our formal check-ins in January, and then we have our last check-in, I think, in May, or whatever, that we have to complete by June. Now, just for your reference, there are a couple of things that I didn't put into this document, because there's infinite amounts, but if I could just kind of walk through a little bit of the kind of work that I'll be engaging in, that would be reflective in the artifacts that I would submit. And if you recall, and I know a couple of you weren't on the board yet, or maybe you were on the board, I can't recall. I had a quite lengthy mid-year with a lot of artifacts. I won't go through that whole dog and pony, again, I'll spare you that. It will be subordinated as appendices for you all to kind of dig into some of that, and, you know, so you can look at some of that. But just for example, if I may, so under relationships with the community, looking at standard three first, and relationships with community, some evidence of progress and artifacts that I intend to utilize is, if you look at the rubric, you will see why, you know, I'm looking in the rankings of fours, what evidence do I need to be able to demonstrate that would show this? So this is going to be a lot of my public and civic involvement and engagement on behalf of our district, to advocate for what our needs are. So that's going to be through Rotary, through scale meetings, AMSD, MSBA, national cohorts that I've mentioned to you, chambers of commerce, et cetera. Those are those types of organizations and engagement sessions that I'll be actively a part of, building and forging those relationships within our community. And again, this is not exhaustive, these are just some of the things that are top of mind for me. When I look at 3B engagement, this is around more internal engagement, and so some of that element would be reflected in student survey data, establishing potentially a strategic plan framework that the board would want to consider to revise, refresh, and update the plan. We're currently in our last year of this five-year plan. Some of the work that I've mentioned around a profile of a graduate that spans K-12, looking at public engagement models, there's one in particular, IPAP, which really looks at, are we informing community, are we empowering them to actually make decisions, so that we understand when we're going to community and engaging them, what are we truly asking for, so we can walk away from such meetings with common understandings? Board committee work, town hall meetings, and I would also say, going back to this data request, engaging our community on how they, as a community, can come together as a community. I feel that there's a lot of differences, that folks are kind of stuck in trying to figure out how to traverse, and kind of get into the center to meet with one another. And so I believe that there's an appetite in our community to figure out how we can come out of these entrenchments, to figure out what we can do in a unified stance to really better the experience of our students. Again, going back to Director Burnick's point about what's best for our students. And then lastly, and then I'll pause before I go to six, element six, is the visibility and approachability. And this is going to be more, again, of our local and internal conversations of me being visible. And a lot of this is stemming from some of our conversations that we had last year as we tied up the school year, and your feedback to me, which I think was very appropriate. And I reflected a lot of this summer to figure out, then, how do I roll that into more of that presence? Because that was something that you all talked about. Not that I wasn't present, but like continued work around that. So things such as varying from Night to Unite, something that we're working out, Soup with the Soup, just to have informal conversations, not necessarily the big roadshow like I did, heritage festivals, Dan Patch Days, MLK Breakfast, Prior Lake Days, culturally specific family nights, athletic and activity events, you know, that would be sports, choirs, et cetera, plays. Just those more organic, kind of rooted, student-rooted experiences, that my visibility is present. And it matters, and I just, I'll never forget when I was at a JV hockey game last year and nearly got rushed to the ER from a hockey puck hitting my head, or inches away. Were you there? Oh, okay, so.
Didn't know about that.
And I did this quick little move, and at the end, these parents come up to me and said, that was like this Matrix move, you know, like, just in slow motion, and this puck coming through. So, it's all about the kids, right? Take one for the team kid. So those are some of the, or those are some of the pieces around element three, that would be more illustrative of the type of work that I would bring forward as my evidence to demonstrate mastery of said elements or standards. So I'll pause there before going on to six to get thoughts.
So I have a couple of questions. So if you, you have, you gave great examples, is there any way to add that in there, like?
I do, right here, and I can certainly upload that.
Yeah, where it's measurable, like where you say, it provides opportunities for input from external groups, so, if you're holding, listening, and learning sessions, or, I don't know how you can, you know, if you say, I'm going to attend every scale meeting, half the scale meetings, or whatever, I'm just, if there's a way to make it measurable, I think it's a lot easier to check the box and be able to say, okay, yep, we did that. And a lot easier for you to say, yep, I did that, it's achievable.
Definitely.
I will, I agree, and I caution from number of, or times, because it's about the quality of the experience, right? So if you have like this super intense scale meeting, where you're learning a lot, doing a lot of work together with the county and in the district, then that's going to outweigh just being present at a couple meetings and not, you know, I do think, I don't want to get too quantified, I do think we can understand that as a board in terms of quality too.
Yeah, so, to both the points being made, so tonight, the reason why I didn't put a lot of that there, because, like I said, there's infinite things that I could be engaged in, and I wanted to just hear from the board, if these are things that really kind of track and kind of align to those standards and the unique elements, then I can certainly craft out some levels of measurement. Some of them are going to be, again, the both and is, I could go to 90% of said meetings, let's say, whatever, 100% of said meetings, and if said meetings, I find...
If Soup with the Soup is a flop, and you're committed to doing 10 of them, right? That's, I mean, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I think that's kind of...
But I'm just trying to put in, like, the layman's terms, then I think
Yeah, so it's a...
We need some flexibility with, how are you engaging in a quality way with the community, and not just you, but us as a district?
Sure, sure. So it's a little bit of both and.
Well, I think there's a way you could measure that as well, because how do you measure a relationship with the community? Is it in the form of a survey? I mean, could you survey the people who you're, the public, the private sectors, the civic groups? I mean, is that something that could be put in as a measure?
Mm-hmm.
I think there's just some way it has to be measurable.
Right. Or does it come back in a different way, such as public forum, where people are thanking you, like, thinking of the town halls on budget process and finance? We know that you're doing them, you don't necessarily have to be there for every single one of them, but we do hear from community members that are coming back saying, thank you for doing that, we learned so much, or thank you for adding to the transparency and putting it on the website, doing all these other pieces, the other ways to measure the quality, based on quantity and the value that's coming forward in those different situations.
Because you have, honestly, you've got how many employees, parents, everything, so it's about picking and choosing the most effective method and means according to where the needs are, and the needs are going to be a moving target through the year and through many years. So when I get into measuring the involvement piece, the one thing that I think of mostly is, first of all, let's not set you up to fail by trying to measure the number of times, but measuring it based upon the overall holistic output, or outcome of that at the end of the year, which is a combination, which I think is Enrique, Director Velez, sorry, I get a little, when we're sitting like this, it gets a little...
Work session.
Yeah. It can, there's so many, this isn't a good one to, like, put a Six Sigma quality thing on to be direct. It just, it's going to be very hard to do, so it's going to have to be a touchy-feel thing as we go through the year, to figure out what the best way to measure this is, both from the impact upon the community itself, as well as the community leaders, and how it's reflecting positively on the district.
You know, and I, you know, to Director Agnes' question, certainly Jenny and I can identify kind of that both-and quantitative aspect of this, because I think that's important too, is having some measurable, you know, aspects of it outside of the rubric. But again, I think the design of the superintendent evaluation, as we kind of talked last July as well, is that the work is very organic, and the work that I do, some, you know, a lot of my direct correlation would be... But again, I think the design of the superintendent evaluation, as we kind of talked last July as well, is that the work is very organic. And the work that I do, some, you know, a lot of my direct correlation would be like the Studer survey that learning leaders took on me, right? Like, that's a hard, quantifiable, because those are really my direct reports. I don't necessarily directly supervise teachers, although I'm in classrooms and I spend time at PLCs, et cetera. But like, the direct feedback would come from like that Studer survey. So that is a, that's an example of that. That would be a large sample of employee groups, if you will, for a district our size. So I think there's ways that we can incorporate some of that, and certainly can add that to that. But I wanted to just, first, before I went down all these routes to kind of start kind of nailing a lot of this down, I wanted to say, is, are these the types of things that you think also align to these experiences? And then from there, we can hone them in to say, now, here are some measurables that we can, you know, tie into this as well. So, so I'll add that.
Nice, so I have a question on the other side of the piece of paper, the teaching and learning. Can we talk about that first?
Yeah, well, for standard six, sure.
Yeah, so this is where I feel like we could have a little bit more measurable results. The question I have for the first one, under school improvement, ensures school improvement plans are in place at all buildings that align with school district goals? My question is why the word "goals" versus the word "policies"? They're definitely two different things. And so that was, that was one of the questions I had. And then the other thing, you know, okay, so let me elaborate on that. So just like you're making sure that all the administrations are all following the policies that we set forth as a board versus our goals. That was where, one of my thoughts was. And then the second one, for curriculum and instruction. When I read this, ensures curriculum is in place, aligned with grade levels, complies with state standards. Doesn't that really fall under Dan Edwards' job, in Dan Edwards' role?
So, so that's, this is the, the kind of scope conversation that I was getting to. So when you look at the, so first of all, the question you had around the rubric, that's MSBA's rubric, so this is just lifted straight from MSBA. So if we want to change...
So it's their goal versus...
If we want, yeah, that's how it was written there. I mean, this whole thing is MSBA's framework for evaluating the superintendent. And again, I have ultimate responsibility for everything. My sphere of control is very limited, because I'm not directly involved with every little aspect, right? So a lot of my work is done through the work of others. So my accountability around curriculum and instruction, yes, is to ensure that, you know, for example, we've got now a curriculum adoption sequence that's in place. We know that math has recently just been adopted, okay? So now, my responsibility is to ensure that that math curriculum is actually carried out and implemented with fidelity. So it's my responsibility to design a framework of implementation so that I can hold folks accountable. And trust me, I've been in districts where curriculum has sat unopened in teachers' classrooms, right? And we wonder, why aren't we getting the results? So, so part of that work, yes, is work that Dan and his team are also responsible for, but it's my job to cast that vision and frame for where we need to go so that I can ensure that that actually has an impact. And we'll talk literally about this, you know, in a couple of weeks. But perfect example is our foundations program. Had that sat, you know, vacant, or sat on shelves, we wouldn't be seeing the 14% literacy increase over three years with second graders who have had it since kindergarten and see the outcomes of that. That's the kind of replication that I'm responsible for. So although I'm not directly linked to some of what you see in here, I am still ultimately responsible. And I just think there's a fine balance of how we measure and account for that.
And as a board, we all, we all agree that these were the two things to focus on, so it does make sense. One thing, the way I interpret it, Lisa, and, but I'm not saying it's accurate, it's just an observation I have, under policies versus goals, like, I would view policies as a minimum and goals as aspirational to be better. So that's how I read it, I don't know if others take it that way, or even you do, Dr. Thomas.
So you're right, policy is basically laying just the foundation that this will even exist. It's not supposed to go into how, why, where. And we're trying to make sure that we do keep that with policy. But one of the things that, as far as measurement goes, is that if you say you want a school improvement plan, then somewhere in here, we have to have transparency to the baseline upon which we're improving. And the same thing goes with the state standards. Even though the state standards is more like par and a hole, literally.
Right, I have no choice.
Right, you still have to have the rules and the standards somewhere where people can see them, so they are all speaking the same language.
So, so if I may, I think you're all kind of getting to this exactly where I was going with some of the things that I believe would be illustrative of the standard around teaching and learning. So specifically looking at six B of school improvement. And I do agree that this particular standard has more opportunity for some direct measurements, quantifiable measurements, because we actually have data around some of this. So this is really helpful here. But evidence of progress, one, is the state of the district. This is essentially where I give our baseline for where we, you know, landed on certain test scores, that being MCA, because that's review data, and then where we're at with our FAS bridge, ACT, et cetera. Additionally with that will be our state of the schools reports. So similar to what I did last year, and I think we talked about this last July, schools will now also have their own individual state of schools that they deliver, because we're increasing that transparency around academics of, said school has these celebrations, has these challenges, and here's where we want you, local community, who attends this school, to hold us accountable and where we're going to drive home, you know, success for our kids. So that's, those are two big ones, I believe, around evidence of progress. We also have data days this year, early release time. That's really going to be focused in on our data. Our accountability measure to come back to the board and to our community and say, okay, after six weeks of instruction, we had this early release time, this is the type of data that we were reviewing. Based upon what we saw, here are some of the potential changes that we're going to be taking, you know, as a result of that, that data release time. So that we're accountable to the board for the time that you've given our staff, who've been clamoring for needing more time to continue to modify and adjust instruction throughout the year. So that's, that's another very easy way to measure. Quarterly benchmark reports, which we started last year. And then lastly, the monthly focus of a, an identified school at every single board business meeting. So that we are having schools come forward, and they're focusing on an aspect of the school improvement plan and sharing, you know, what they're doing here in the board. Because not everybody in our community will necessarily go out and visit schools. If I don't have kids in my school, but I'm a taxpayer, I want to know kind of what's happening in our schools to, you know, whether I'm going to continue to support you or not. So there's another opportunity. So I think, again, a great way that we can not only showcase our schools, and that's like, that should be a 100% drive, which was last year, but then also the progress that folks are making in those. And then lastly is, no, I'm sorry, curriculum and instruction, six C. This is going to, the math curriculum implementation plan is areas that I believe are very ripe for evidence of progress around that domain. The new science of reading framework in our literacy plan that we're going to have to have per state statute, that's going to be something very comprehensive that we're engaged in. Similar to what we did last year with program reviews, we have a mint caps on deck. And again, am I doing every little aspect of this? No, but I am working and orchestrating teams who are delivering on this work for our districts. I just want to be very clear, you're holding me accountable as your one employee, and I hold my, you know, tactical team accountable as my series of employees to really cascade this out through our district, to funnel back up to say, did we deliver on said promise that we had with, you know, our goals? And then ACT prep at the high school as well, around curriculum and tracking, which will be new for us, to look at ninth and 10th grade so that we can have more time on practicing ACTs, so that we can bolster those scores of ACTs, which really is a meaningful measure that our high schoolers are looking at, based upon opt-outs and all that kind of stuff. We don't see that level of opt-outs when it's a college readiness exam compared to like an MCA, for example. Lastly, culture of cooperation. For me, the evidence around this, again, not exhausted, but these are some of the things. So Friday's five is some, so one of the pieces of feedback you all gave to me last year at the end of the school year was having more of that proactive communication, you know, with staff and with community. And I believe, if I'm recalling the conversation, the feedback session accurately, how, how, once it leaves my mouth, is it making its way down to the classroom? And so one of the things that I'm wanting to commit to, and again, around that accountability, is delivering the key five things at the end of each week. So that the board and all staff will see these Fridays five as top of mind for the superintendent to keep all that communication out, not always relying upon the telephone chain. No disrespect to all the staff, principals, et cetera. But, you know, I just think about, you know, we're at a learning leaders meeting, and I make a request to do X, Y, and Z. Principals time, they get busy, they forget to share said information with staff. Oh, let me quickly just throw at my newsletter without much context. And then the staff, you know, I come in to ask for evidence around something like, "What are you talking about?", right? I mean, again, no ill will or intention, but here's a great opportunity for me to maximize my reach into all of our staff directly from the superintendent, not necessarily always relying upon that chain of command communication. Studer survey data, I think, also would illustrate a level of cooperation. Are we seeing staff leaning in with one another, et cetera? Our PTCs, and then a repeat of some early release days or data days. That's where we actually have a lot of our PLC work occurring. And again, I think fostering that culture of collaboration around student performance is the best way to pull folks together. So these are some of the areas that I thought would be great evidence of progress that I would upload as artifacts to show, you know, my progress towards or mastery of said things. Now, I'll close with this. I'll never actualize this to 100%, like, we're always going to be working on a culture of cooperation. And the other six standards that aren't mentioned here this year are work that I'm continually doing. They're just not going to be the emphasis of focus or reporting out. But I just want to be clear about that too. It's not that nothing, none, no other standards are being accomplished. They are, but we're going to measure these areas, you know, for the evaluation purposes. So I'll stop there and open it up.
Feedback from board members?
So I think, I mean, there's a lot, obviously, to accomplish, and you've inherited some challenges. And so I think, at the end of the day, probably, when we talk about academic achievement and focusing on academics, when we, when we look at our MCA scores, and I know that's only one factor, you know, we're not a shining star in the Southwest Metro. In fact, our scores in every category, math, math, all the three different categories, we all went down from last year, which is disappointing as a district. And so, you know, are there any measurable goals we can put in that focuses on academic achievement? And I don't, you know, I'm not saying it necessarily has to be an MCA score. But I think that, at the end of the day, we cannot, we can't continue to go down. It has to be a major focus.
I would, I would absolutely agree with that. And, and yes, it's a data point, and it's an important data point, so I want to be very clear about that. And this is a conversation that actually that we're having with Studer right now, is developing an academic scorecard. And, you know, we had, if you recall the conversation last fall, the, what's called that big plan of...
Strategic directives.
The strategic directives, thank you. The strategic directives was what I would, again, a lot of great work went into developing that. I would say a lot of what was captured there was core functional work, not necessarily work that would drive to change and transform a system or really solely can get really super tight on student performance. Now, there are some, don't get me wrong, there were, like I said, I'm not throwing that plan completely out. I think the conversation that we've been having as a senior cabinet is to make sure that we develop a scorecard that focuses on the aspirational work of our outcomes. And ultimately, that's our student performance. A lot of the other work that we do is in support of that. And this is no disrespect to transportation, IT, and all the other operational aspects. Like I said, that's backstage, and if that doesn't go right, that front stage performance is going to be horrible. So we need both. But that's, that's the work that I also believe, and I shared this in July, and again, I'm not, I don't want to get ahead of the board, but that's the work of a new strategic plan. Like, we, we have an opportunity to, as we consider finishing this year out, to refresh this plan that has the metrics that matter baked into it. And that's, that's what I'm kind of setting the foundation for. And I was very open and transparent with the board, but I'm also mindful that that strat plan work is the board's work. And if that's the direction you all go, you know, I will follow your lead. I just know we're, we're primed for this. A lot has happened since that, this current plan was written.
Can I ask, how does that impact academic achievement though? Because at the end of the day, when you look at the MCA scores from 2017 to now, and we've gone down significantly, how does the strategic plan impact academic achievement?
Yeah, it's, it's actually developing a scorecard with strategies that are measured against the outcomes and performance. So that's, it's an accountability document that we all can now work toward and drive home the outcomes for our students. So the strategies will vary from building to building. And again, that's going to be on our states of schools. So every building, and you're asking, what will change? Well, that question is going to be answered at our individual schools, at their states of schools. And if you can't attend, it will be recorded and/or it will be uploaded on the website. Those are the strategies that are going to be pushed out by way of the schools. So I hope that answers that question around how will that change? That's, that's the strategy work.
I was just going to say that the original strategic directions were made extremely high level. And like was said before, and I believe you made comments on it coming into your first year saying, "I'm going to leave it in place." But it was a large portion of that was back office operational. It wasn't directed towards the actual outcomes for students as far as, let's say, the academic outcomes. And that's part of the profile of the graduate, that's part of the profile of creating a new strategic direction, that's part of getting the community back together to do that in this year so that operational stuff is removed out of that strategic direction and actual goals and workable goals and measurable goals are put back into it. That's, that's, that's kind of the way I saw it, and I'm very happy for that because our other ones were very broad and overlapping. And, and, and for my world, it would, those would never have helped water.
Director Vance, can I ask a question, because you've been on the board for seven years? Can you ask why it was broad and why it wasn't more specific? I mean, I'm just curious, because I don't know the history.
Well, there's, there's a lot of reasons for that political leadership, you name it, in the past. And we, and it's time, first of all, no strategic direction lasts usually for more than five years anyways. So we're due to have it reworked, and, yeah, I mean, it was, there was a lot of stuff that went into it. It was community-driven to a certain extent, but when the community came in, it was already kind of molded so that there was only so many boundaries that people were going to work within. Also, you want a strategic direction that sits at the top of the pyramid and can trickle down into actual operational, both at the student level as well as in the back office level. You want something that can trickle down. And the one that we had, it overlapped, they weren't mutually exclusive. Like, like teaching and learning here for the standard is mutually exclusive from the other ones so that they can be measured and not actually conflated and combined and all that. So I like the direction that we're going, but we definitely need to rework those strategic directions.
Yeah, and I'll add, at the state of the school, some of the conversation here, there will be... there will be strategies that I'll share that are going to be deployed in, in our buildings to address performance. So, and, and I'll synthesize some of that because there's going to be various strategies at all of our campuses. But I'll synthesize that to say, here are some of our high level strategies that we believe are going to impact staff's ability to improve their practice, therefore resulting in better achievement of our students. So that is something that I will share at that state of the schools. Then at that more granular level, schools will do that as well. So we'll have that for this year, I want to be very clear. You'll, that, that will be a part of this conversation. What I'm suggesting is that the board consider the life cycle of this current plan. What do you want your scorecard to look like? That's really going to be leading with academics. And then you have a management or an operational plan that's a companion. That, that's kind of like your, your operating system, it's always running in the background. But this is going to be our leading indicators. And our current structure just doesn't have that. And I'm, I'm not faulting it, I'm just saying it's, it, it looks different. And I think when we are leading with that academic scorecard, it really puts the emphasis and the focus where it needs to be. So a lot of the chatter and distractions and all these other things that are going on. I mean, your, your question is spot on. And how does this help our students? So that's, I, I offer that as a consideration as you all think about what you want to do as a board with the current plan as it kind of runs its shelf life at the end of this current academic school year.
So I give another follow up question, I'm sorry. So I understand that, but like, starting effective immediately,
Right, right.
You can't wait to develop a new strategic plan.
No, no, no.
My understanding, that takes six months to a year to put in place.
Correct, that, that's going to happen simultaneously. The, the other piece that's this year is in my state of the schools that's coming as a result of the data that I will present.
Right.
Here are the high level strategies that we are going to undertake to change the trajectory of the outcomes that I'm presenting.
Like as far as
Like this school year.
Back to school, here are some of the things we're going to focus on.
Right, right, so, so, let me just go there, let a little cat out of the bag for tomorrow. So, yeah, I mean, tomorrow's back to school kickoff is not the state of the schools. Yes, there will be data slides talking about our MCAs aggregate. This is all going to be a lot of aggregate work. There will be conversations around our FastBridge data. There will be conversations around our ACT data. Those are the three primary data points that we'll be looking at high level tomorrow. School principals and their respective building and functional leadership teams have already been spending time this summer as they, as, and this week, since they've been, or, yeah, this week as they're coming back all full in person, a lot of that information is being now compiled and analyzed at the individual school level to say, okay, given our local context, we know the aggregate, so, yeah, not, not anything to write home about. And, and, but are there bright spots? Yeah, there are bright spots. Are there opportunities to grow? There definitely are. So knowing that, what does that mean for us, you know, at school X? And that's the work that, I, I keep coming back to this, you all will see, which is different for us this year, of our local states of schools. And you can get extremely granular because that's where the rubber meets the road. That's where our staff, our teachers are, that's where our, our students are. And we can say, okay, here are the three big goals for this school. Now, as a community member, I'm listening to this, I might be a business owner and say, huh, so tutoring is something that this school wants to focus on? Now I know, and guess what? I might ask my employees, you know what? I want to commit five hours a month for us to rotate through and do tutoring at school X. Community doesn't know unless you ask and tell them. And, and that's half the battle. And so that's why I'm wanting, again, not that they were hiding, but it's just lifting the veil and say, folks, here's where we are. We're going to celebrate, there's a lot to celebrate. But we also know we have a lot to accomplish, given a lot of the challenges that we've been facing as of the past four years or whatever, you know? So we have, we have nothing better to do than go up. So let's do this. And, and that is, that, that is all I'll share about tomorrow, more to come. But that's generally the direction that we're going.
If I could just jump in just for one quick second, just to give another concrete example. And it's related to the scores and MCAs and math and stagnation of scores, something that we had seen, which resulted in our study, which resulting now this year in our implementation. And Dr. Thomas referred to the built teams at each site level and the skip. There will be a common goal at each site, every, every elementary will have a goal specific to their implementation plan related to the math curriculum, because that's a universal. We've spent a lot of resources, commitment of time and resources and summer planning. And all of our teachers had opportunity to participate. Those that weren't able to, just a few of them over the summer are going, are getting that this week on Wednesday. So we feel that that is something that is going to be consistent across every building. And to Dr. Thomas's point about state of the schools, each school, talking about their implementation of that and having a goal specific to that. So just wanted to add that component of specificity to the conversation.
I'd like to just, you know, I, I hear a lot about test scores and all that, and I get it. And I've seen multiple school districts in the past, I don't know how many years, as I'm sure everyone else has, go from spending a week of normal curriculum to training and testing and practicing for, let's say, the MCAs. And as a result, they lose a full week of normal instruction, which may make their MCAs potentially look better. But I mean, at the core of this is learning. And if, and if the students actually learn and learn how to learn, then eventually the test scores do improve. But test scores are not something that we're, probably not, maybe we will, but it, it's not something that you just see an immediate result, you know? I add a math curriculum and all of a sudden the scores go sky high. It's really about, you know, teaching those critical thinking skills. And, and, and what you do in first grade affects how they do in second grade, affects how they do in third grade and stuff like that. So it really is more of an ecosystem. And I just hope that from, from the community standpoint, we don't put so much emphasis on improving each test score by like so many percentage points. Because all we're doing is kind of setting up our students actually for failure because they're going to learn to take a test, but they're not going to learn the materials. And I've seen too many kids hit a wall.
And that's, that's a good point, and I appreciate that. And just to tag on to the curriculum adoption and implementation cycle, it takes about three years to see evidence of a new curriculum. Actually, and, and, and I referenced the foundations. And we are spot on for that this year, which you'll see in, in a few weeks, where our second graders, second grade scores,
Last year's.
Last year's second graders are the ones who have had the full three years of the adoption, the, you know, teachers working through the, the kinks of, of the new curriculum, the PED that goes along with that, the trial and error of learning a new way of teaching and learning for kids and staff. So their scores comparatively internally, not to other districts, but our own kids, they grew, like I said, about 14% in three years' time. That's a significant rate of growth, you know, for kids. And you do it young enough, like we're starting, you now have that foundational aspect of learning, to your point. I can now build on that as I add, you know, middle school electives, other core classes in, you know, AP, et cetera, in the high schools. So that is the learning trajectory compared to incremental, you know, X percent by this time. You know, I mean, again, we need those measures because those are some of our benchmarks. But that's why I think it's a balance between your summative data points and your formative data points because there's a distinction between assessing for and of learning. And, and you need both, you need both. So I, I can go back and now crack, if, if, if this is generally great in terms of some of the artifacts that I can upload, we can certainly quantify some aspects, you know, like, and ask, you know, give, give a quantifiable under some elements. That would also help the discussion and conversations you all have as a board. And present that to you come September 11.
Great, I just want to open up the door for any other board directors who have questions or comments about this in the process prior to voting in September.
So do we get one more look at this? You're going to update it, we get one more look at it, and then we approve it at a board meeting? Is that the process or?
Yeah, there would be discussion, there, there'd be, yeah, there'd be discussion at that board meeting.
Okay, so there, there is one more chance to look at it and discuss it.
We'll be in our next board book to review.
Yeah, I mean, my biggest takeaway is I'd like to see measurable, something, especially when it comes to academics.
Are other board members wanting to weigh in at all and have other questions?
I agree on the measurability. I mean, I think it's really important. And when we want to focus on academics, to some people that might mean different things, right? Perception is reality, so some people may perceive something, someone else might take it to mean something completely different. And so having the measurable goals as far as academic achievement goes, for me, I think what would be really helpful for me in understanding is what our district, what that looks like. Because when I think about like academic achievement, you know, when, when we see that the decline has been happening for many years, way even prior to COVID in our district alone, I'm always searching inside like, why? What, what, is that the increase of cell phone use? Is that, you know, the decrease in maybe student accountability and how they behave in the classroom? I don't know, there's a lot of questions that I ask, like, what is causing? I mean, we do have the pandemic that, yes, we can sit and, you know, that, that impacted us all greatly and learners greatly. But the decline happened before and with the MCA, the current MCA tests coming out and, and we're still seeing some residual decline. The, the change in the strategic plan and all of that updating, I think that's important. And it's time. I think what would be helpful for me, as well as I think that the community too, is just understanding how exactly we measure. Because if it is just test scores, that might not be an accurate prediction. Like, how can we measure some of the other things that we know are challenges within our schools? Whether we know them because we're a parent or whether we know them because we heard them from another parent, you know? So just kind of holistically having an understanding. Because, yeah, we do want the increase in academics. We also know that that takes multiple things.
Right, I echo what you say. I mean, I'm worried that you put a number in here and say, we need the MCA to be this, and that's the only measure. And so until we know what that could look like, yeah.
Could you say something like, we just want to see the MCA scores improve? I mean, at this point, we're just continuing to decline, and that's not acceptable, I mean.
We do look at FastBridge more often, correct?
Mm-hmm, we do.
Or you can say that, but FastBridge as well, we just want to see increasing scores.
I've spoken of that, I believe, so that would be my question there.
Yeah, leading indicators versus our lag in communication.
Yeah, and then I love that we're not using excuses. I have heard no excuses here tonight that, oh, well, it's because of this or because of that. And sometimes I think a really good time for change is when there's a gut punch. And I'm sorry to say it, but if you are a parent or a teacher or an educator in this state, you know that education has been impacted for many reasons. And I'm happy that we're going to measure some of it, but I also think it's great that we're taking a peek, like, we're looking at it.
Yeah, and, and when I, yeah, and I really appreciate this conversation. You know, you've heard me say this, that data, data doesn't give you the answer. Data allows you to understand and ask better questions to continually improve. Because again, a kid could be getting all A's. Do we say, hey, they've arrived, we're done with that one? We don't, right? There's always improvement. And, and there's nuance as to how we can capture that. And yes, it's harder when you have a student who's kind of that high achieving student for them to demonstrate the level of growth compared to somebody who might be a grade or two below grade level and their ability to show growth, right? It's, it's, it's significant, which was actually part of the flaw of the MCA system and some of our old accountability measures, where a kid could have made a year's worth of growth, but if they didn't pass the Meets Proficiency bar, they got dinged. So that system eventually changed, obviously that was no child left behind. So we learned different ways to measure our students. And I want to be the first to say, I think having academic targets, I, I call it a scorecard, is really important because students want to know, what's the bar that you want me to hit? And if on, on aggregate, comparing internal cohort to cohorts of like, you know, features, we can line out, and I'm not saying it as fancy as Jenny can say proudly, but we can line like, this is your anticipated growth trajectory, you know, and say, are you plus minus that? I can have a much better conversation with Dan and his wife about their son than I can show that target, that scorecard to them. And so why I keep coming back to that is I do believe that as a community, we need a little reality check around what does this mean for us? Gut punch or whatever you said, right? Like, we, we need to have that conversation, a very honest conversation with ourselves. And you will also recall me saying that data is not judgmental, it is to be developmental. And, and, and I want staff to understand and administration to understand and our parents that, you know, we could have all these goals in the world, and if they're weaponized to really hammer down on someone, it's not going to feel good, you're going to see a kid who just will not learn, right? So let's have the, the, the data that's going to give us that opportunity to have a developmental conversation and say, you know what, Michael, I think there's more in you, and here's why, right? I can have a very different conversation, you know? And I've had those with students, showing them and breaking down MCAs or, you know, NWEAs or MAPS or whatever we were using internally at various districts. Like, I can have a really good conversation with a kid and help them understand how they can help themselves based upon the goal you have. If you want to go to college, great, let's figure out how we do that. Because here's where you're at and here's where you need to be if that trajectory is going to be a reality for you, okay? So, so I'll get off my soapbox on, on some, some of my passion around this, but I think it's time. And I think we have an opportunity as a board, as an administrative team, to come together and coalesce around a performance card that is meaningful and allows us to have some good conversations with our community and ultimately with our kids and our families. So with all that, I will work with Jenny to identify ways of getting some of those progress measurables in there, aligned to that standards. Not every single little element in the artifact, but I'll, I'll kind of stick with the two and then find ways that we can put some quantification around that. So you have that plus the qualitative experience, if you will, of data.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are we ready to move on? We are celebrating Payroll Staff Appreciation Week.
Yay! No payroll!
Just don't screw up. Thank you, Payroll Staff Appreciation Week. The week is September 4th through the 8th, and Mary will make a proclamation for us.
The Heart Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 4th through the 8th, 2023, as Payroll Staff Appreciation Week. Our payroll staff play a key role in managing the salaries and wages of our more than 1,300 staff. Our payroll staff play a key role in managing the salaries and wages of our more than 1,300 staff. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has two full-time payroll staff. Side note, for 1,300 people. Whereas payroll staff support Prior Lake Savage Area Schools staff through ensuring proper paychecks, including the management of over 11,000 retirement and voluntary deductions. Whereas payroll staff manage 80% of the district's general fund budget, which amounts to a $90 million payroll budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools payroll staff for their work supporting all employees and ultimately the success of our students and proclaims September 4th through 8th, 2023 to be Payroll Staff Appreciation Week and Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you, Director Frederickman. No, Herman, sorry.
I would just like to reiterate my deep gratitude for these two individuals. Christie and Morgan are absolutely phenomenal. And to add upon the 1,300 staff with two employees, just to, to put it in context, a lot of organizations outsource a portion of their payroll where the payroll team gets it ready and then it sends it off to a third-party vendor to act, to do the processing of it. We don't outsource any of it. Those two individuals are truly doing the whole payroll process for all of our employees while supporting all of their questions, helping with their time off questions and a whole bunch of things. So these two individuals are, are mighty, mighty team that we are extremely grateful for, especially twice a month. So we just want to extend our gratitude to them and thank you for your appreciation of them. It's a very difficult job that doesn't get a lot of gratitude often, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say, the phone calls only come in when something's not right, but we are thankful. Okay, that, then we're moving on to board governance policy, board policy review. So we are looking at 203 first, which is the school board operating norms. Then we will look at code of ethics. And this is our final study session before we go to the September 11th board meeting for AVO. So I'll open it up for the board, knowing that Enrique and Mary, who are on policy committee, did the preparation work, which is in board book for us this evening.
So I just want to, I submitted these documents to Chair Crosby on Wednesday, and after spending quite a bit of time looking at this policy, and I know in the past, I've been vocal about how I felt that this policy, 203, had a combination of both ethics and norms, and that was one of the biggest challenges I had with this policy. And then after looking at other school districts' policies, it became even more apparent to me that our policy is very different from whether it's MSBA or Minnetoka or Diner, no matter what school district you looked at. Our policy 203 is very different. And so what I did was I pulled an example of Minnetoka's policy, or policies, I should say. And what they do that I really like about their policies is they actually take this policy and they break it into like five different policies, which not only do I think is helpful from a a board member's standpoint, because it's very easy and simple to know exactly where to look for each piece of information, but it's also really easy to follow from a community member's standpoint, especially when it comes to things like the consent agenda or public participation in school board meetings. So I really like the idea of taking our policy and splitting it into potentially like five different policies that Minnetoka did. As we go through this, I have gone through and I've indicated with my many notes which, where, where our policy is on ours, where it is part of like ethics on Minnetoka's policy, or it's covered under Minnesota law. Many of, so anyway, so like I said, the one thing that's concerning to me is that our policy, I believe, is a combination of both ethic and norms, which I think can be, could be separated out. The other thing that I found very interesting about Minnetoka's policies is that there's one very general policy that says, and I'm going to get to it, I'm sorry, let me find it. Sorry, it's at the very beginning. It basically says that as a school board director, we need to follow Minnesota law. We need to follow Robert's Rules of Order, and sorry, I'm looking for it. I apologize. Okay, here it is. 203.3, operating the governing rules of the school board. Much of what we do on the school board is actually governed by state law. And so in their policy, it says the purpose of this policy is to provide governing rules for the conduct of meetings of the school board. And it basically says, we have to follow Minnesota statutes, which are in the law, which are listed below. Specific rules of order as provided by the board consistent with Minnesota statute and then Robert's Rules of Orders. And it's very simple, where I feel like what we've done is we've actually given more specifics and more language, when ultimately, if we just, as a board director, follow Minnesota law and Robert's Rules of Order, we're doing our jobs, because much of our jobs are defined in policy of what our role is. The other thing that I have some concerns with our policy in, those are the first couple of pages that Martha included in this, is before, and I know this takes full board approval to get legal to review this, but I have several different concerns that this policy, even though that has been in place for, I don't know how many years, I have some legal concerns with it, and I would like legal to go through. And I can point out where those legal concerns, whether it has to do with asking our board to self-censor themselves and/or freedom of speech. Those are two, kind of the two big callouts. And then the one where we're trying to like change language under 5.1, where we add the, we add the language under how we govern. Board members shall seek and whenever possible, support solutions that they believe will provide the greatest benefit to the largest number of students, period. And then we want to add, without negatively impacting others, I believe that that sets up us up for legal liability. Take for example, I mean, I didn't write this in here, but take for example, the masking policy, okay? That was, you know, supposed to be for the greatest benefit of others, but it clearly negatively impacted some. If this policy be in place, we would have had a legal liability. So I'm recommending, and again, I know it takes full board to get legal to look over this policy, but I'm recommending that legal, legal take a specific look at that one as well. As the other one is has to do with, sorry, I want to find it. Sorry, there's a lot of, I spent a lot of time on this, so. Well, I don't know if you want to go through each one specifically, or if you want to give some feedback to that. I can, like I said, I can take you through each piece of this where I feel like I had some concerns with it.
I guess I would suggest a couple of things.
What?
Legal looked at it. Okay, yeah. And, and before we would approve, we can definitely run it by legal again. I have no problem with that whatsoever. And if you have specific concerns, I mean, that's, that's my take. That's not the will of the board. I think it's fair for legal to review.
So these are norms. They're not, they're not, it wouldn't even come close to touching the masking or anything like that. So the definition of norms of how we govern ourselves, which is statutorily 100% in our, in our own governing capabilities. So like was said before, boards do govern themselves in this area, and these are norms. They are not legal, except for the open and closed meeting law. They're not statute, and you don't want statutes to come in and do norms. That's not what it's there for. So, and legal did review it, and if I'm not mistaken, Emily, I think they reviewed it twice.
I would have to go back to, to look at that.
Yeah, I would like, for my own protection, I would like to see legal guidance on that specific language. Because my understanding is that the policy is not workable and potentially open the district to liability insofar as this policy can be used as a basis for the reasonable care the board is expected to exercise in the performance of its duties. For example, just an example, Asian students could show that they are negatively impacted by the board's action, and this policy could be used to show that the board did not exercise, exercise its reasonable duty of care of implementing its action. Thus, the board would have to argue against its own policy to fend off an equal protection claim. As is the board, under the law, it's obligated to ensure equal protection. This policy serves no constructive purpose, for which I've pointed out at previous meetings, with this language, I specifically pointed out. So that's where I would like legal to take a look at that specifically. It just seems like you're putting in two different types of.
That language was in there when legal looked at it. Again, these are operating norms. And if you've ever been in an organization that has norms, basically, it's about how board members, not how students, but how board members interact with each other and how we hold each other accountable. It is not a policy that affects students, so to speak. It is how we work with each other and make sure that we are holding each other accountable in our deliberations and in our activities. And norms are also kind of customs. They are not, many of these have, have grown over time. And one of the reasons why, again, on the seventh reading, to make, to put this in a place, is because we had a very tenured board before this, that I know I walked in and I kind of had observed for a while, but people have been here. One person, I think, had been on the board for almost 20 years. So there was norms already established, and they weren't necessarily memorialized. And now that we have a new board, some of the things that we were doing on our regular course of business and talked about and elaborated on back in our study session, it turned out that we had to memorialize them or make them a little bit more clear, so that we did not only follow the open and closed meeting laws, but also had rules of engagement with each other. So you don't want the legislature to ever legislate rules of engagement. That's like telling an organization who decides to make a rule, say that meetings can only last 45 minutes, so you've got 15 minutes to get to your next meeting. You don't want the legislator coming down and talking about those norms. So these are norms between each other, and that is defined, and that is 100% within our right to do.
So can I ask, Mary? I mean, you've been here, Mr. Director Franz, for a long time. This policy is completely different than any other district in our state. And I understand that because you've done things in the past, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right way to do things. And so my challenge is, is even with 5.3 and 5.4, which says that once the board has taken action, board members shall support and abide by the official policy, official position of the district. While our board governs by a majority of vote, and an individual board member cannot repeal a board's action, an insu, an insinuation that a board member could not continue to speak out against the board's action is contrary to law. There was a case called Bond versus Floyd, where it says, "The manifest function of the First Amendment in a representative government requires that legislators be given the widest latitude to express their views and issues on policy." No other district in the state states this in their norms policy.
The MSBA does. The MSBA does, Lisa. The MSBA and Robert's Rules state that once the board votes.
Can I finish, please? I believe that this policy is asking a board to self-censor. And that board member, if that, and you're asking the boards to, our board, to self-censor ourself. And if the board member does not choose to self-censor, there should be retaliatory action, and that is a violation of your freedom of speech. And so that is one of my concerns as well. And then, like I said, the other thing is, is that, so let's take for example, under General Statement of Policy Number Two, it says, "Board member accountability to the entire school district succeeds. Any loyal board member may have to other advocacy or interest groups." That is actually, in Minnetoka's policy, it's under ethics. And, and that's actually under MSBA policy under ethics. So that's where I'm, we have this combination of this policy that's like ethics and norms, and it's, it's not crystal clear. And then even on how we relate to one another, board members should, are encouraged to express their honest opinions of legal issues. That's an ethics issue. And again, that's on the MSBA ethics policy, as well on Minnetoka's ethics policy. So I think if there's a way that we could go through the policy and separate it out into different policies, it would make it much easier for, not only for us to follow, particularly with the newly added 6.1.3.2 and 6.1.3.7. That all really falls under Policy 213 and open meeting law. So do we need to add some language to 213 to, to make some changes, rather than having this in our operating norms policy? Or do we need to just have a policy that says, this is what open meeting law is? But to have this policy, this six-page court policy on operating norms is, to me, confusing. And I, I think it's also hard for our community to find things. For example, 6.14, all the way down to 6.148, is all about school board participation from the public. Minnetoka has a specific policy 206, it's a separate policy, all on public participation in school board meetings. So it's very easy for the public to, to find. And why would we have public participation guidelines in our norms policy when it's our board norms? And that, so that's another example of how I feel like this policy could be split up. And like I said, I did go through and I split it all up into where I feel like it could sort of mirror Minnetoka's. But I wanted, I apologize if you didn't get these, or like I said, I sent them to you on Wednesday, and I, I, you know, I wanted you guys to have some time to look at this before, so we could have more of a discussion on it, so.
So can I ask, Professor Lisa, last time, we have been talking about this quite a while, you know, we can go back and watch the video and all that and change our notes and stuff. So it seems like the last time I recall, you had a few objections, but then you really liked MSBA. And then at what point did you pivot and say, okay, let's consider looking at how Minnetoka is breaking theirs out differently? Because quite frankly, this should not be this difficult.
No.
We've talked about this stuff. We all agreed on that last time, that some of the norms overlap ethics. I'm loving hearing all the concerns, but I would love to see some progress. And I'm trying to figure out how we get that progress to look, because it's just, we are splitting hairs. And so I'm curious, because I know you liked MSBA ones because it was concise and.
Yeah.
When did the Minnetoka one rise to your, you know, like Wednesday it did, or like, because at some point, and I know Enrique could help with this too, Director Vazquez, like, we have to figure something out here.
Yeah, I mean, our.
And we can all start sugar, you know, picking things out.
Yeah, I mean, our policy is so far from MSBA's, to be honest with you. And so when I started looking at other districts and trying to understand why are we so far away from MSBA, I came across Minnetoka's. And like I said, what I really liked about it, it was very simple and easy to follow, not only from a board director's standpoint, but also from the public being able to access, just click, 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 here, I'm looking exactly for. And I know.
And I'm glad that they changed, like, they removed 203 and a certain date and implemented all these. Like, it's, it's pretty easy to go see that out there.
That's exactly what they did.
That's what they did. And, and I didn't spend a lot of time going to a bunch of other communities, but you know what? I don't really want to do that anymore. I'd like to figure out what would be a solution that the seven board members could come to some sort of an agreement on. And I don't want to hear from anybody else.
Yeah, the other thing is, we don't have a policy on consent agendas. And so they have a policy on 203.6, so it's part of their 203 series, on consent agendas, and we don't have a policy on that as well. And then their ethics policy is pretty much straight up out of MSBA. There's very little deviation. But much of what we have in our norms is in their ethics policy. And like I said, I went through and I kind of pinpointed where that is in our policy.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Julie. Can I hear from some other board members on feedback and thought?
We've been going through notes from the past seven months, going on eight. To Julie's point, I think I've been going through my notes. I watched back a couple of meetings to make sure I had my notes correct, and I. And I, and I do feel like I... So, much work has been done by the board members on the policy committee. You know, Lisa, I commend your research. I do think that everything that has been brought to the table has been discussed, has been revised, been tweaked. And I fully understand that, you know, there's three new board members here that are looking at this with a fresh lens, which I think is healthy. And I think, yeah, there are some things that we've revised, we've tweaked, we've talked about. And I look at this as kind of our handbook. We ask our students to look at a handbook and abide by it. They don't like everything about the handbook, I'm sure. I don't want to speak for kids. But I'm sure there's pieces of the handbook that they don't like. We still have to abide by it. And there might be things that we don't like about this policy. But I think by and large, we've talked about this for seven months. And I'm not diminishing the importance of these policies at all. They are very important. But I look at, for example, I know we're not talking about it yet, but I look at our Code of Ethics. And I look at, I look at that, those two sheets of paper and think, this is basically saying, "Be a good person and be ethical." I don't think it requires a whole lot of debate. And, or discussion, quite frankly. I'm just, I'm ready, I'm ready to move on. And yes, I am seeing a lot of this, Lisa, for the first time. And I'm trying to listen to what you're saying and read at the same time, and it's proving difficult.
Yeah, and I have my own project about that.
And that's okay. It's just, I'm not really hearing anything new that I think warrants too much revision.
If you look at the MSBA policy from 209, Code of Ethics, it really is quite simple. "As a board member, I will..." You'll attend school board meetings, you'll come to the meetings prepared, you'll listen to the opinions of others, you vote with your conscience, you support the division of the board. This is, I really like this number five. "Support the division of the school board, even if my position concerning the issue was different." But it's not asking a board to self-censor themselves. You know? So, when you talk about ethics, much of this is actually in our norms policy.
I think it implies that, Lisa. "Support the position of the board." That implies that you will support it. I mean, that implies that you aren't, that we, not you, we as board members aren't going to go out in public and say, "I did, I do not support this," even though it passed. You know, I think it's implied that...
But if somebody, if a community member asks you to explain your vote, would a board member receive a violation for explaining their vote? I mean, that's where, as a board, we can't ask ourselves to self, we can't ask ourselves to self-censor. Yes, we can support the integrity of the board.
I think it's determined by the severity of it. If it's a promoted situation, that might be more severe than a casual conversation. That's just my opinion. But again, it's implied in Minnetoka's policy, in my opinion.
Right, because the three core fiduciary responsibilities we have are the duty of care, duty of loyalty, and then duty of obedience, which aren't necessarily spelled out. But each one of those different elements that you just read cover those three areas. You show up for your meetings, you show up prepared. You engage with community members to gather input, feedback, so you're prepared to have the discussions at your various board, study sessions, business meetings, and committee meetings. Duty of loyalty, you place the loyalty to the district above any other loyalties that there might be. And then, once there's a decision made, you collectively agree to abide by the decision. Or inversely, you agree not to speak ill of whatever that decision is, whether you report or discuss.
I agree with that statement.
I think if I were to weigh in on... I too, I appreciate all the work that you did here, Lisa. Obviously, you spent a lot of time on it. Not having the space to go through it yet, I'd like to. As a new board member, when I'm looking at policy that we have and I'm looking at the revisions in which we've done, you know, I'll just state, in going through the board book for this meeting, I was myself confused just by all of the different colors. And so, you know, and there's no key, right? And so, it, there's... I love simplicity. I feel like policy needs to be clear and understandable. And so, I appreciate the thoughts and, you know, just what has been shared so far on the, you know, the work that Lisa has presented tonight. I haven't got to look at it yet. And I too am challenged in how long we've been here. So, kind of all of the above. But in the, in the end game, what do we want? We want the best policy for our district, a policy that is clear and understandable by anyone who reads it, as a board member, as a community member. And so, if there's pains in reaching that, I'm willing to go through those pains. And again, without having had the time to go through what was presented tonight and only, you know, I just, I, that's, that's my comments.
Are we ready to move forward with this? I do believe, in my opinion, based on some of the things you brought up and based on making sure, I understand that norms are not laws, but I do think it's in good faith for the best interest of the board. Now, we're at our final stage to have Legal look it over. And the point about negatively impacting others could be a risk. And I would definitely want them to look at that. But again, it's norms, so I understand what you're saying as well. I think we can let them weigh in on that and give us some direction and bring that to the table on September 11th, when we...
So, my question... Oh, I'm sorry. Can I come quickly? Chair Crosby was able to review email and confirm that it was reviewed by Legal. But I am happy if it's the will of the board to have Legal review again.
How does the board feel? I mean... I was just looking at cost, because since we've already, I think we've had them look it over twice. When we first made the, when we first called in the, the Legal to look at the Open Meeting Law thing, and then we made the adjustment here, we had them look it over, and then I think we had them look over again. I agree with Amy that if you're colorblind, it looks like a Christmas tree. And we did have a clean version that didn't make it in here to make it easier to read. But every single one of the changes in here have been previously discussed. Some of the definitions are elaborated on because of previous discussions and questions. And it has been sitting out there, like you said, for months now. So, there's really nothing changed from the original one, except for some qualifications. And our original policy was pretty light to begin with. So, the only thing we really did was elaborate on the meaning and the definitions. But if it is, I mean, like I said, if we want to pay the money again and do it, I have no problem with Legal looking it over. I don't think we're going to come to a different conclusion. But I think the only thing Legal did change, but said it was awash, was the conflicts based on board loyalty. That's the only comment that they had last time. I don't, yeah. I mean, what do other board members think? There's part of me that thinks have them read that 5.1, make sure we're not at risk, you know, by making that...
Well, there's 5.1 and there's 5.3.5.4 because of the Boyd versus, the Bond versus Floyd Act for law. So, Bond versus Floyd, it's 385 U.S. 116. It's, it was in my notes of how we govern. There's basically a law that says "The manifest function of this First Amendment in a representative government requires that legislators be given the widest latitude to express their views and issues of policy."
On the legislature?
So, is that...
Yeah, a couple of things. We're not a legislature, number one. But number two, also, like, that is very true. And then, and then we come to a void, a vote, excuse me, and move forward. And back to Enrique's statement about loyalties, but the loyalty to that vote and moving forward in the best possible way for our district supersedes that. So, that's a norm. Everyone is protected under the Freedom of Speech law.
Yeah, is it, are we, are we, by our norm, are we violating the amendment for the right of freedom of speech? I think the biggest takeaway that I was trying to put together, and like I said, I spent hours on this, on my vacation, believe it or not, going through this. And is that, should we be breaking this out into a policy that's easier for our public to follow? I mean, even when you look at 6.16, where it basically says, "This is the order of the school board meeting", Minnetoka has a policy called 203.2. It's almost identical, order of the regular school board meeting. So, instead of having it all in this norms, can we break it out into separate policies so it's easier to follow? That was my biggest takeaway on this. And like I said, I had some legal challenges that I was concerned with.
Did you have any legal challenges in the Minnetoka one at all?
No, because they actually reference all the laws on their policies.
Well, and we spoke of doing some hyperlinks at one point, and I'm pretty sure we talked about them in like one version.
That's in our, that actually came on the board moment session, yes. That would be a goal of our policy committee.
They have open meeting law referenced in their policy.
So, we do also in the other policy that, this one just mentions open meeting law. But remember, the norm in here is to prevent us and provide the rules of engagement so that we don't come close to it. It wasn't meant to define open meeting law. That's not what a norms is doing. Doesn't happen there.
And then, under 6.14, that really is Minnetoka's policy 206, which is for the public. It's not even a board operating norm. It's all about the public coming to speak at a school board meeting, which is 206. Public participation in school board meetings, which I know as a member of the public, when I was coming to speak at a school board meeting, it's hard to find this policy when it's in the operating norms. So, should that piece of the policy be pulled out to be separated for public participation in school board meetings? We literally could take that piece and create 206 or whatever. It's 203.6, whatever we want to call it.
Lady said that piece was not meant to discuss public participation. It was meant to discuss board members who are not members of committees, so they understood that they're observers and they weren't breaking open meeting laws, so we had a norm. This doesn't...
No, 6.14, Mary. "In point from students, staff, parents, and community members, in major decisions can be valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board." This is all about open forum.
It, no, the norms here are how we govern ourselves. It's not meant to be the final thing on that. The norms here are how we govern ourselves. And we put a lot of extra language in here because of previous questions that you have had over the months. So, and most school districts are going for less policies and combining them, rather than creating more, actually. But the thing is, is that we are on the seventh or eighth reading. I think it's now the eighth reading of this. As long as we're not breaking the law, which I, Legal's already looked over it, but I don't have a problem with them looking it over one more time before we go to a vote. Is there, is there anything else in here that after all the discussions and the suggestions for changes, that people would like to see?
So, I would like to see it broken out. And then, I have, I have one other, four other things I want to address, yes.
All right. One suggestion that I have is breaking out into multiple different policies could take, could be quite time-consuming. And there's, I don't believe that there's anything against the policies under the policy development to continue to work on that fact. So, bringing forward the subject changes and then if it's the will of the board to look at breaking it out from there, passing 203 with the subject changes and then continuing to work to break them out into policies moving forward so that we're not holding up the subject matter changes when looking at changing the format into multiple different policies could be an option.
Thanks for that. Because I think what we're getting at as a group is the content, right? We want the content to be, you know, agreed upon. The formatting, the number of policies that these have read, yeah. I mean, perhaps that lies within policy committee for the board to then weigh in on at a later date.
But policy...
Sorry, I want to make sure that policy committee covered that too.
My, my, it's right, yes.
I just, the board could look at that separately, of breaking it all out, because that would be more time-consuming.
I think in terms of subject matter, are we ready to move forward?
I have just a couple of other concerns I'd like to address. Under 4.8, "When communicating with the public and with each other, board members shall ensure the integrity of information shared and ensure the information is validated." How do we define validated? And how in the world would we validate the data? Should that term be turned, should it be changed to accurate? Validated, to me, means that like almost every single piece of information that I speak about in the public, I would have to go to Dr. Thomas, or Dr. Edwards, or Emily and get it validated by someone.
I think that's fine.
Versus making sure that it's accurate.
We should be doing that.
Well, we're, validated and accurate, it's the same purpose. But yes, we should be making sure that when we repeat information, that we go to the superintendent or the administrator and make sure that the information is accurate. Or validated. Now, accurate usually has a data connotation. The reason why validated is in here, and it was in here in another place anyways, was so that we make sure that we're communicating with the community as honestly and as correctly as we possibly can.
Could you say validated for accuracy? I mean, I know where it's putting here.
But again, if you're having to validate every single piece of information, that could literally be taken as that a board member has to go validate every single piece of information.
So, we've had a couple, we've had a couple of situations where stuff was repeated that wasn't validated. And, and that needs to happen.
I liken it to what we learn in professional development, right? When we were talking about, you know, having conversations in the grocery store or you get a phone call or something like that. When, you know, people share a story, you're talking about something. And if you don't know, having the comfort to say, you know, "I don't know, but let me get back to you" and make sure that's accurate or so. That's how I, again, I guess everything's open to interpretation, of course. That's how I read that. Like, making sure that I don't intentionally say or write something that's inaccurate. If I know it to be accurate, like something that happened at a board meeting or whatever, I feel like that's, that's different. I know that's accurate. But if, I take this as if, if we're having a conversation with somebody and I'm not sure of the answer, I don't, or I can't verify that it's accurate or valid, I would absolutely go to Dr. Thomas, or Dr. Edwards, whoever, and say, "Hey, I heard this. Is this true?" Or, "What else can you tell me?" Or, "Can you provide more context to go back to that person?" That's how I read this, that yes, absolutely, we should be validating information, especially if we don't know if it's accurate. But I think if you do know it's accurate, that's very different.
This policy is saying that you have to ensure that all the information is validated. So, what if we were to just cut it off at, "When communicating with the public and with each other, board members shall ensure the integrity of information, period." Because you're basically saying here, "The information shared and ensure," meaning you have to go make sure that information is validated. So, let me just, there was a...
Yeah, I could spend my life validating information.
Well, we should validate the information with the school districts.
Before we, before we repeat it and share it.
Understood, but you might get different sources of information.
Well, not if you're going to the superintendent or his direct reports. How would you get, those are the one source. They are the source of truth.
That's how I... I don't know.
What's, you know, when I think back to what you said, what's best for kids is to ensure that we're truthful in our communication with our community. And if I'm not certain about it, I, I need to find a way to get certain about it or, or saying, "I'm not certain." Kind of like you...
Well, the integrity of information, period, just that ends it right there. I mean, you have to, you ensure the integrity of the information, done. Versus the validation piece of it. So...
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not going to butt you on the validation. That's really important. It also helps us to learn as board members...
Well, that's your, that's your opinion.
Or, sorry. Oh, because we also talked about validation in 5.5.
We actually say, in 5.5, we also say validated, which I have a big concern with 5.5. Because it says, "Board members should take risks in confronting differences of opinion," which is important. "Board members are encouraged to fully participate and to disagree about issues to ensure full discussion in board meetings. However, they must be careful that adherence to a point of view does not unreasonably prolong discussion," which honestly, we should be following Robert's Rules of Order. So, if we had a policy that said we were to follow Robert's Rules of Order, that would... follow Roberts Rules of Order, that would, that would combine that. "Information communicated is validated and not partisan." So, here's my question, just like we heard from our speaker this evening, there are many nonpartisan organizations out there, so how do you define not partisan? Like, that word itself is, is just confusing.
It's when you mention partisan, the definition of that is political parties, so you can't associate it with it. I mean, when kids come to school, they're not Republican, Democrat, or Independent, they're kids.
Right.
So, you have to look at it that way, and there's, that's been in there since the beginning, this is the first you've ever brought that up.
Well, I didn't have a, this, this is the first time I spent about a week going through this policy, to be honest with you, and when I started to compare it to other policies, that's when I really saw how far off base our policy is from other policies. And if, if as a board, it's the will of the board to just move forward because it's easy to just go ahead and pass the policy, I'm not into doing things because we've done things. I think it's best to bring our best, look at other districts, look at best practices, and be open-minded to, to, to making changes. I mean, like I said, I know you've been on the board for seven years, Director France, but I respect your, I respect your history on this, but I really am having a hard time understanding why we have a policy that is such an intermingling of ethics and norms and what the community is supposed to do. It's just, it's very confusing to me, this policy, and that's why I think we've had seven readings of it, because I'm not the only one sitting here being confused by this policy.
The more you dig, the more you find new things, correct? So, you must agree with that, right? I could go out and dig, and dig, and dig, and dig. But I guess I would say, as I look at the information that you presented to us today, which we haven't had a lot of time to read, I would still like to try as a board to stick with the document that we've all been working on. I love Emily Herman's advice that perhaps we could start it here, and then if we want to break it out into subpolicies later, that would be something that I would push for. But I do think there's about four points in here that are not that far off in wordage, as meaning like, if there's five words in 5.1 that we cannot get our arms around, I would like to see consensus on this policy, personally. Not always possible, but I feel like if we are going to continue to move the goalposts, it's, we're never going to get this done. But I would like to dig in, and as we get close, we were close maybe a couple meetings ago, and there was like, three words we were going to take out, and then we bailed. And I agree, I'm not here just to do things the way things have always been, but I think we're here, we're now, I'm not excited to just copy another community's policy, but I'd like to work forward on this, and so Lisa, you have given it a lot of time, you've told us that on vacation, so you must be pretty close, so let's hear how close you are, and what few things would be tweaked, because I think they're in writing here. I'd like to hear what those few things that are tweaked, that we could all hear, and like, document, and say, is that something we could get our arms around? If someone says, "I need to take off the five words on 5.1 without negatively impacting others," if that is, that's a question, let's all think about it. If the next one is, I'm worried that, my First Amendment rights are violated, which I know are fully protected by the Constitution, I'm not really that worried about 5.3 and 5.4. And at 5.5, of course, we govern by rules of Roberts Rules, and then I get up to the sixth one, which we have beaten like, a drum, about the fact that all we would need to do is let somebody know we were going to attend a meeting, so I don't see that we're that far off, except there's definitely some egos and stubbornness that may be just piling in here, and I think we need to pull those layers off and say, "How are we going to get this done?" Because I don't think we're that far off. My concern is, we leave this meeting, and we all go dig up more stuff, and say, "Well, how about this?" That's where I stand, today.
That's, that's fair. And so, I definitely, definitely can go through that, and it would start with number two, which is in ethics, it belongs in ethics. I believe that whole, number two, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, that all belongs in ethics. Number three, I believe in ethics, how do we relate to one another? Those are ethics, that is not a norm, those are ethics.
Just out of curiosity, behavior isn't norm, and one of the reasons why we took stuff out of ethics, which you were in agreement with, and moved them over here, and by the way, this, the board member accountability is, is, by the way, in our, in our, in our oath, so, but we've already been through this, what, three sessions ago, where we moved them out of ethics and put it in the norms?
We did move them, we did.
Yes. And, and had a good hour and a half discussion on that one.
Okay, you just, you asked me to go through it, so I'm just doing, I'm doing exactly my due diligence of what I did the first time around, where I made notes on my papers, to try to give you guys a clear understanding of where I see the challenges with this policy.
Right, but I'm using actually the documents that were provided to us, I just am asking you respectfully, to help me understand, stick with what we have here, that your main concerns on, no, just, let's go through the norms, and if you're concerned that they're not in ethics, we did talk about moving things over.
Yeah.
And so, stick with one, don't, just, just stick with those, and I'd like the rest, I'd like to hear from everybody else. Like, if we're going to push this, we just keep pushing it.
Yeah, so, I can start with what I put down on the paper first, 4.3 and 4.5, "It is the rule of the score, school board per Minnesota state statute to care for and manage the school district. A board member shall have equal access as a public person with regard to district data, and that private district data would be the only data that perhaps would be held as confidential. A board director should have access to any public data in order to support the ability to perform, to perform their role, to care for and to manage the district. Any data that could be required by a FOIA request is the same basically data that a board director should have access to." And that is in direct correlation to 4.3 and 4.5, where it basically says that board members have to get permission from the superintendent and the board chair in order to get data, in order to do their job, which is 4.5. "Board members shall channel their requests for district information and reports, as well as clarifications and questions through the superintendent and the board chair. Exceptions only apply when there are allegations," and then there's a lot of colors, again, I agree with.
Where did it say permission?
Well, it says you have to go through the superintendent and the board chair, so take, for example, the board chair denies my request for information, which I have access to through a FOIA request, why would I be denied access to that information?
Because, and we've talked about this, but because of the excessive amount of workload that it's putting, that that request is putting on the district, hours and hours and hours.
But that would be in your opinion, like, right?
That is what I was told by district employees, right? So then, that amount of workload is directed coming from one board member. So, yes, that information is still achievable through a Freedom of Information Act request.
A data request, which is fine.
But that could be, but that could be any information, that's subject to the board chair and to the superintendent, so my, my thought on that.
Lisa, you conflated two other things. We act as one board, we do not give individual direction to the superintendent or the administration. That's where that piece was separated out. Now, FOIA is a different piece, that's a data request, and you can act as an individual all you want, but when there is, and it states in there, and it's also in the MSBA policies, it's in Minnetoka's policies, they refer to the MSBA, matter of fact, so does Y Z, so does Z D I N, because when we first did this, we did refer to it, but as a individual board director, you cannot give direction individually without the board to the superintendent or his staff or any other.
It's not giving direction, it's asking, it's getting the information that you need to do your job as an elected official, it's not giving any direction whatsoever.
And that's, I think, where there's a difference of opinion.
So, that, I'm just, you asked me to go through this, so that's where I'm saying that if a board director can get information as a FOIA request, they should not have be limited to information. The only thing would be private data, okay? Then in 4.8, "The issue I have with this language is that several words are not defined. District information needs to be defined, defined, as this policy could be read as requiring a board member to run everything by the district that she wishes to say concerning the school district. This would also potentially violate the First Amendment," and that was 4.8.
How does, I'm just, like, isn't that just the validated versus accurate?
Yeah, and we did talk about that, yep, we talked about that.
Well, that was what we talked about, okay, so that's a word.
Right, and then 5.1, we talked about, about the negatively impacting others. 5.3 and 5.4, we talked about the Bond versus Floyd law, that says that they are able to express their views on policy, and it's also, I believe, it's asking a board to self-censor, and goes against freedom of speech.
It doesn't say self-censor, it doesn't deny freedom of speech. Your opinion is reading into that, but it specifically does not say that.
My experience of receiving a violation, or that quoted violation, is a real lived experience. Okay, so I'm just saying, as a board, I don't want to have to fight some of the things that, I'm being asked to self-censor.
Is that 5.5?
That is 5.3 and 5.4.
I just feel like if it was censorship or freedom of speech issues, Legal would have caught that twice already.
Yeah. I'm shocked that they didn't, actually. Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I have a team of lawyers.
They did look over this.
Did twice.
Yeah, they're, they're norms, I just want to.
They're norms, correct?
That, nothing that you read here is said here. I think we're getting to a point, I don't want to, well, you can keep, per your request, finish going through the page, please.
So, then on 5.5, "If our board follows Roberts's of order, this part of the policy is not necessary." How do we define the word validated? And validated by whom? To state that the information is to be not partisan introduces several issues. There are some organizations that are nonpartisan, and routinely come to conclusions that tend to support conservative or liberal conclusions. How do we define nonpartisan under 5.5? And then, last, again, 6.1.3, all the way through 6.1.3.7, I just believe that the language in this policy all ties back to open meeting law, which could simply be stated in one statement, that board members are required to follow open meeting law, and include the statute for reference, the liability for open meeting law. Actually, the liability for open meeting law actually falls under the individual who is conducting, conducting the meeting, not the board member themselves. "Under having a procedure in place which requires a board member to give notice of attendance prior to attendance to a committee meeting, would let the committee know ahead of time, and would give the committee facilitator the opportunity to remind the observing members that they are there to observe and should not participate in any way. This such procedure could be put in place and communicated to each meeting facilitator." So, if we, as a board, like I said, if we put in, that this is really, if we as a board are to follow open meeting law, then it really becomes the job of the facilitator to ensure that there is no open meeting violation that is going to occur.
I can understand how that could be procedural on you and not lie in policy. I do not, my difference of opinion with you is that I believe that it is on us as a board, not as facilitators in the district, to make sure that we adhere to open meeting law, so I prefer the language that's in here. And the language was put in here and discussed, almost ad nauseam, in order to correct the other issues that were going on, and make it clear how we are going to deal with each other. So, and this is, again, was, this whole section was one of the first changes that were put in last April or May, and it was also made more specific, based upon your request back then, and there's been no comment about it until now, again.
No, I've been fully opposed to this from the start, and it's mostly because I attended an executive meeting, and I don't want to get into details, and I attended as a facilitator, or, I'm sorry, as an observer, and when I was asked to speak, I got served a violation for breaking open meeting law, which was not true, and so.
That's how it worked, because I was there, but I'm.
So, anyway, so I have been opposed to this from the get-go, and I would just say that 6.1.3.5, it actually ties back to the meeting facilitator's job to ensure that we're, that open meeting law is not being broken.
I think it's above and beyond the expertise of a facilitator, I would say that. If I went to a meeting, it's my, I should know it's board member, and I think there were situations in the past where board members didn't go because they didn't know if they could be there, and that's what we're also trying to prevent, we're, we're trying to prevent both things from happening.
So, you're preventing a board member from going to a meeting?
No, not at all. We are making certain that if there's any uncertainty on a new board member or any board members, can I be there? It's just sharing, so it's working on both sides. You see it as one way that it's preventing, I'm seeing it as allowing, that's just what I see. In my past experiences, where I've been concerned, can I be there? There'll be more than three of us. So, yes, you have experiences, and so do we, and I think we're saying, if we can make it clear, we can prevent both from happening, someone from being felt like they shouldn't go, and someone feeling like they need to be. So, we have clarified it, and maybe it's too many words, but there's always somebody after us that have to read that and say, "Oh, can I be there?"
So, under 6.1.3.5, if we could take out the word, "To ensure arrangements are made to prevent a quorum," because basically that says that four board members cannot attend a committee meeting.
Right.
So, when board members attend a committee or advisory meeting, again, I believe this whole section should be under committees, not here, but that's here and over there, but when, under 6.1.3.5, "When board members attend a committee or advisory meeting outside of their assignment, they may do so as an observer. The member will inform the chair and the opposite superintendent of their intention to attend in order for the office of the superintendent or the chair to provide instructions and ensure arrangements are made to prevent a quorum." That, to me, says that either the office of the superintendent or the chair could say, "I'm sorry, Director Atkinson, you cannot attend because there's a quorum."
Or, you need to sequester yourself into a different section away from the other members who are already assigned to that specific committee, so that you prevent the appearance of a quorum.
I agree with that, but, but there's that or, right?
But that's what it says in there, if you let us.
And Director France, you cannot always be the chair.
Nothing in here said you cannot attend, as a matter of fact, we went out of our way to make sure that nothing in here would ever say that somebody couldn't attend. What it does say is if you're planning on, on attending, that you let people know, so if the meeting is, if nobody knows anybody else is coming, and they, they put it in a very small room with only a couple of chairs, that we know, and we can move it into another room that's bigger, so it doesn't give the appearance that there's four board members in the same room.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
But that's what it says.
The problem I have with, the problem that I have with is at the end of it where it says, hey, you, the member will inform the chair and the opposite superintendent of their intention to attend, period, that's it. And then, take out, "In order for the office superintendent or the chair to provide instructions and ensure arrangements," or you could just take out, "And ensure arrangements are made to prevent a quorum."
Why? We want to make sure that other board members are accountable to ensure arrangements are made, to prevent the appearance of a quorum, that's on all of us to make sure that happens.
I understand, but preventing a quorum could be asking you not to attend.
That's, but it doesn't say that here, you're.
We could add that sentence, we could add that sentence. At no time will a board member be requested to not attend. We talked about that at the last meeting.
Yeah, we did talk about that, I would be, I'd be fine with that.
And, that's pretty clear, right?
I'm not going to go that far, because we've already taken stuff out and in here. There is nothing that prevents a board member from attending a committee meeting as an observer, or if they're a member of the committee, and. Do the board members want to weigh in on a language change on that, or not?
No, that's worth the end, that would be good.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with the language as is, I also assume the best intentions, and that we are not going to automatically exclude other board members from participating if there's desires to attend a committee meeting where there are already three people signed that are going to participate.
I'm fine with that as well. Enrique, that's a good point, assume best of intentions, I mean, it's, I'm fine with it as is.
And I'm fine with it as is, as I stated before, matter of fact, I think we go way above and beyond to try and make sure that the best of intentions for all board members of intentions for all board members, and that we do hold each other accountable, which is part of our goal. It's not against one person or for one person, it's all of us. And all of us have a responsibility for making sure that we are operating in the best, not only in the best of attention, but we actually give each other the ability to be able to perform in its best way. I mean, you know, there's, there's things, there's rules in here that were changed because we don't want it to be the way it normally is. So for instance, if you go back to, once a board has taken action, board members shall abide by the official position. We specifically took support out, so if you didn't support, if you didn't vote for it, you're not going to lie to people. You can still tell them. But you still, once the rule is passed, once the, once the whatever's passed, then we abide by it. So there's, we went out of our way, and we talked about this several times, that we want to make sure we give the utmost freedom within a respectable boundary for how we engage with each other. Those are norms.
Are we ready? I have a question. So can you tell me, if we're, if you're working on a very important policy on the policy committee, and four board members showed up, how is that going to be handled then? If four board members want to come to a committee meet, your policy committee meeting, and we're working, you're working on a very important policy that everybody wants to learn about...
This could definitely happen.
This could definitely happen. Please, can you please share with us?
We have two committee members that sit at the table that participate, and the rest are observers.
That are involved or sitting at the table but listening for, to help in decision-making at the board.
Yeah, I mean, that is...
Same thing with your district curriculum. Same thing with finance. I've shown up to finance committee meetings. I, I'm not a, I'm not a member anymore.
But you were, you were opposed, you're openly opposed to me attending that executive committee meeting. So that is my concern, and I'm just going to be very transparent.
You are not being honest with how that executive committee meeting went. And if you want to go down that path, it will not be pretty. But also, one of the things we have for norms is showing respect for each other here, Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay?
Agree.
And being honest.
I, I am being honest. I know exactly how that meeting transpired, so...
We talked about this at our, we're session in May, and part of that conversation was, if we know someone's coming, then we could actually space ourselves out. We've all talked about that.
So that's why I'm wondering why she's, she's opposed to the language.
Because we just keep bringing it up. We just keep bringing it up. It has to do with the size of the room, it has to do with, if someone says they're coming, then we know that we have room to spread out. We all talked about this in May. Like, come on, we all agreed to this. Not that hard. And in May, or whenever that executive committee meeting happened, no one knew you were coming. We were in a tiny little room. Let's just be truthful and honest here. And if it were to happen again, we might be able to spread out and open a door and have a little more space. That's just the facts. Sorry, that's the truth.
In the interest of moving forward, are we ready to consider this for a vote? Knowing Legal will look at the language on 5.1 that Lisa brought up?
And 5.3 and 5.4.
Did we have consensus from the board that that was also language that we wanted Legal to review? I did not hear consensus from the board on that.
I, no, that language has been reviewed multiple times even before this one came about. 5.3 and 5.4 have already been reviewed twice.
Is Legal aware of the Bond versus Floyd policy that says that we're allowed to express our views and issues on policy?
So Bond versus Floyd is about a incoming member of the House of Representatives in Georgia who was denied entry into the House of Representatives by doing, because he was doing his job, his paid job, before he took office. African-American man was denied access. And the Supreme Court said, no, you should have full access. That's nothing to do with legislating.
And it has nothing to do with boards either, or norms.
Okay, well, that was just something that came to my attention.
Okay, so we can agree with that one. 4.8, validated versus accurate, is that going to be a stumbling block?
Where are we?
I, I thought we were moving on with, which is the 5.1. Unless the board feels otherwise. So if there are any other things on this list that were, that the will of the board is to consider, please tell me now, so we can move forward.
Not on my end.
Sorry?
Not on my end.
I think my biggest challenge is that we're trying to make decisions on information that's just been presented tonight, and I don't feel comfortable doing that. I feel that the work done on the policy to date and all the conversations is, I don't want to discredit it. I, you know, I feel like, I don't know. There, when, when you receive one argument one way, it sounds right, right? And then you hear another argument another way, and that sounds right, too. So what, where I'm being put in the middle is against two arguments that sound right. And, you know, we've gone through this particular policy multiple times. Things have been brought forward. Now, tonight, we have a new list of concerns, and I, it's hard for me, without being able to sit and actually read through them, to say one way or another. However, I do feel like the, I'm ready to move forward if it is, you know, we just have to say, what, what things do we need to change? Like, Director Burnick, you said, what do we need to change on this point, this point, this point? So that we can move forward, where are we? I feel like we've just gone back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and my head's kind of spinning over it all.
Yeah, and just, you know, I sent this to Director Presby on Wednesday. So I apologize that you guys didn't have enough time to go through it. I tried to get it to you in a proactive way so that we could all review it and have a conversation about it this evening, so...
The good news is, I think we are having a conversation.
Yeah, oh, we are, absolutely. And I also was challenged with the color code, the pink, the green, the yellow, that was very confusing to me. I still don't understand what all those colors mean.
Yeah, I'm not going to read. Okay. So I do appreciate the time you put into all of this, and I think that there's definitely some, I think we're dealing with content, and there's probably an enhancement of organization that you've spoken to that Minnetoka has already done that could be in our future. Content pieces that are left, what I'm hearing in my notes is the difference of opinion, is validate versus accurate, is Legal to review 5.1. I think there's a difference of opinion from what I'm hearing with board members on the Bond versus Floyd and censoring. So there's, there's 200 school districts, all of them have their own version of norms. Minnetoka's only one of them, we're another one. So I just don't want to, if we're, do we have to go through all other, there's more than 100 districts, right? There's like 700.
We are one of, our district is very unique, that we are the only district that puts in limitations on what a board can do versus explaining what the rights are of the board. And that's the problem I've had with this policy from the beginning. So if we want to move forward, that's fine, but just understand that this policy is actually putting limitations on how we serve as a board director versus, that, versus our rights as a board director.
I don't agree with that, but that's one of the seven.
Yeah.
I think at this point, I'm going to ask for thumbs on moving forward with that, with that stipulation of 5.1. Legal reviewing that at this point, we've been over an hour of discussion, and I'm getting consensus from enough board members, I believe, to move forward. So thumbs to move forward for a vote September 11. Okay, we will move forward. We have no first or second reading of policies, and the next item is superintendent relations. Nothing. Informational items, any, anything there? And then that leads us to future agenda topics. Are there any future agenda topics from board directors that need to be added?
I think, given the fact of our last board meeting and what was brought forward as far as a parental rights resolution, there has been, it has been brought to my attention that, that there is a strong community desire for that work. What that looks like and how that moves forward as far as in our strategic plan, I think that it is a concern, that is a nonpartisan concern, what parental rights look like as far as our district, and adding that to a future agenda topic, I think, is warranted.
So just to be clear, you're referring to what was brought forward at public forum last, at our last meeting?
So yes, that, that resolution was brought forward at our very, at our last meeting. And then, since then, there has been a community petition that has started. I'm not sure where that is at as far as, you know, the numbers that it has brought forward. But there's also been just that engagement, some response that was received by the person bringing forward from the board. There's been question about that. And so I think for the sake of, you know, bringing down temperature in our community and promoting something that we could unify around, which is the agreement that, you know, parental involvement is something that we respect and encourage in our district.
Can I ask a question? First of all, parental rights are statutory.
Yeah.
And obviously, one parent's domain is their own child, it's not anybody else's child. So the one thing that I would like clarification on is, is there, is there a statutory, you know, something we can summarize that way for that? Because I think there's a little confusion between what we can actually do and what we can't do, because obviously parental rights, again, the domain of a parent is only their own child, not what affects other children. And then there's statutory requirements that we have to do anyways. So I'd like to personally know before we engage in that discussion what the intersection is. Otherwise, I think we're going to be overstepping bounds, and I don't want to do that. I know it's defined, I just don't...
Yeah, there's many, there's many of our Minnesota laws that protect, protect parents' rights. One of, one example is the reviewing of, updating out of curriculum. That is one of them. There's many, many others that protect your parents.
I think I'd give a lawyer.
I agree, 100%. I would be in a full agreement. But I think bringing the issue to a study session for further discussion, I would support that as well.
So the, the opportunity I want to give to Dr. Thomas is talk a little bit about the strategy work that we could potentially do in the district, and knowing that some of these types of themes could come up through that strategy work from a collective community. And that's kind of one option. Not saying it's not an option to not have it on the table, but I just want to kind of open the door to that conversation a little bit.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I've said it a thousand times, and I'll always say this, our parents are our students' first and foremost teachers. So we clearly have to respect and understand their rights as parents to govern their experiences for their, their own individual kids. No, no questions asked. I also believe that our community, as I shared earlier this evening, is finding itself at a variety of levels of impasse. And it, you know, I'm just thinking of the student conversations, I feel like we're in a lot of us versus them situations, a lot, or community against district, or district against community, whatever the binary division is. And I think it will be healthy for our community to engage around a variety of topics, to declare levels of importance of what matters, to really move us to a more unified approach to educating our kids. You know, this is one of thousands of things that are out in our community right now, you know? A lot of different topics are out there of what various individuals or groups of people are looking for. And I think we're at a point where we, we have to assess and kind of declare what's that value proposition for this community. And yeah, I think, I think this, among a lot of other things, is going to surface through community cafes, town halls, whatever you want to call it, to identify what's important to this community when it comes to educating kids and what the educational system has to offer. So that, that's my initial thought. And again, I can count many board meetings that we've had where individuals have come forward with thoughts or ideas of what they would like to see this district do. That's one individual that is now working with other individuals and petition, I don't, I don't know, I mean, hearing about this petition. So, so again, I think the board needs to understand how you want to move forward with that, and I think in a structured approach, because the next person's ready for their issue to come out, and they're going to get a petition going. And that will be the thing to do.
And I appreciate that context, you know, I, or that feedback, actually, because when I, you know, when we're dealing with issues being brought forward to the board, I understand it, you know, the person is bringing it forward. When there is a petition, you know, regardless of it's this, this one that is going on currently, or like you stated, other ones from, from other members, other thoughts, thoughts. How as a board are we making sure that our community feels heard, that as a district, we are presenting ourselves in a way that, you know, where there has been trust that has been broken, that we are moving forward? And I will say, Dr. Thomas, I have been so encouraged by your leadership in that, in the transparency, in trying to build back trust. You've stated that from, from the very beginning. And I know that trust can be broken quickly, and it takes a long time to be built back. Some of the process is, we have to be patient in the process. But also, I'm very mindful as, just recently, not being on the board and also being a parent and a community member that doesn't feel heard, right? And so I'm super mindful of that. How do we operate both and, right? That we're not just going off of every demand placed at the board. And we're also dealing with parents, whose prized possession and their passion is their kids, and we understand that, we understand the, the weight of that. So when I'm asking that it be discussed at a study session or a future board meeting, it's similar to my ask in May, you know, about signage and things like that. Because my true desire is that we can bring the temperature down and, and as a district, really figure out how best to show that we really do respect all. And I don't know what that looks like. I, I know it's probably the magic question, but I want to step into figuring out how we do that. Whether it's at a study session, what, you know, I don't know how else to do it besides having us all discussing it together.
Well, can I, can I ask a question? How was the diversity, equity, inclusion resolution? How did that come to be? Because in my, from understanding...
Because in my, from understanding what the parents' rights resolution is looking to accomplish, it's, it's a resolution, it's very similar in ways to the diversity, equity, inclusion resolution. So how did that come to be for board members who've been on the board? How was that developed and put into place?
I wasn't on the board at that time. So there is a huge difference. One, we do have a human rights law. And the other thing is, is the resolution was that we abide by it and it did go through several iterations. Some things were taken out. There's only, so far, we can go with that, but it does abide by it. It's simply stating it vocally that we are going to do it in spirit as well as in law. And that's where it ended up. And of course, it came by to do a very public statement after the incidences that happened both in our state as well as in our community and our school. So that's where that was. And quite frankly, it says nothing other than strongly stating what we already had in our mission, that we're going to, you know, support all kids to be, you know, contributors to the, to the global world and prepare them for that. So, and I paraphrased, obviously, but it really doesn't say anything different. It just says it in much more, quite frankly, flowerly language.
So I appreciate that. What I'm trying to understand is how did it come to be? Like, how did it go through the process of getting presented and approved? I mean, like, that's what I'm trying to understand. I wasn't.
So I don't know how it came to be. I don't know the, the, I wasn't Enrique, it wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I was, yeah. So it was something that was already planned, it was something that Ben Chair wanted to move forward with. We hadn't developed anything, it was just more of an idea. Worked, collective community voices, put out a request, sought input from community members to participate in the process and started with basically listening sessions. Here are the different challenges, here's what's going on throughout our community, throughout our schools, combination of admin staff, teaching staff, student voice, parent voice and general community voice that led to the formation of resolution. It was that community voice that developed it, owned it and presented it.
It did go to the board. I know I made edits to it. And, and it was validated by the statements because that was one of the questions that I know I had when it went through. I had legal validations with some of the language in there and how it was starting and stopping, et cetera. But it basically was the, a statement that says that we are going to be inclusive of all. We are, we will not tolerate, you know, discrimination against any student in our district, that sort of thing. So, and it abided by the human rights law in Minnesota as well as everything else. My concern when you juxtapose that against the parental rights is that parental rights, just like spousal rights, et cetera, are statutory. And we have to honor that from a legal perspective. And I am concerned about stating something that may overstate our boundaries or even discussing it without having that level of review first, to know where our boundaries actually sit. And then also engaging the community in that because I do think that there are different opinions on some of the areas that, that extend beyond just somebody's own child, which obviously you can move your child, we have freedom of choice, we've got a lot of things in our state. And I do think, and I would totally agree with Dr. Thomas, that some of that is actually based in distrust, it's based in, it's based in affiliation, it's based in desire, like you said, your passion, and I mean, your, your child is your child, you know, that sort of thing. And because others may want something different from their child than some other, then, then we get people who are butted against it and want their way to supersede others. And that kind of does conflate a little bit, it's not juxtaposed, it would conflate a little bit with our, with our resolution. And we need to know where those boundaries are. And I think engaging in, not in this board discussion, but actually engaging in a greater community involvement would be actually more beneficial to that. But also, I don't think, you know, we're the Board of Education. We should be educating the public on where the statutory boundaries are and making sure that everyone's on the same page and understanding it ourselves so we know how to respond. So that's kind of where I, I stand on that. I agree with you that we don't want to avoid the, you know, the elephant in the room, so to speak, but at the same time, we have to understand the roots of where it came from. Is it, is, is it bound in distrust? Is it bound in individual, different family belief systems, which really does end up in their domain? Or are we doing something where, where, you know, there is a law that we need to go by? Or, you know, or something that they're asking for which could violate the rights of some other family and their child? I don't know all that. I know there's really strong feelings and there's really passionate feelings in both directions on this. And it seems to me it is a little bit more psychological and social than it is, than this venue can handle with seven members and 25,000 to 30,000 people in our community.
I had, sorry, I had another idea for an agenda item.
I do too, actually, because I didn't get to state mine.
Should we, should we wrap this one up first?
Sorry.
Just, can I, can I get? So I think what we're looking at is either something for a larger collective, community effort involving strategy work to bring, that that is how it could possibly come forward for context. And that's what I'm hearing is a possibility from Dr. Or it could be a future agenda item. So I guess my question to the board is, looking for thumbs, is this type of resolution, which is a parental rights and transparency resolution, something we want to ask our superintendent and leaders to pursue and bring forward for future discussion and consideration for the board in a study session? Thumbs would be the best indicator.
Aren't we going to check on statutory first in terms of process or?
I'm sorry, I.
If we can talk about.
Okay. So I did not catch that clarification. So what am I missing, board? This was me trying to recap what we discussed.
I know, and you did a fantastic job.
I missed something.
That's my question.
Well, I'm a thumbs down because I'd like to do it at the community and get clearance from what we even can or can't do. Because again, parental rights, our domain are all kids, not just one parent's right over their child. So there is, there's some confusion there, but I think the actual root of that is, is much larger than somebody actually just saying, you're not abiding by my statutory rights. I think it is more conversational, I think it is more social, and I think it is more about bringing our community together than, and I think that, I think that goes beyond what we could do just at this table. I'd like to see Dr. Thomas handle that in his community engagement.
Okay. And, but back to your question, Jessica, which was, I'm not sure it was answered.
She asked if statutory was in there before we even considered the thumbs up or thumbs down. I think, is that, did I understand you?
I think so.
I do know that there's other school districts have done this. I don't know if it's in the state of Minnesota, though. So in the, in honoring transparency, and I know how important that is to Dr. Thomas and to our district, I'm a full supporter of moving forward with it. I feel like if we wait for our strategic plan, we could be looking a year out. And from what I understand, from what you explained with the diversity, equity and inclusion resolution, it was a group of people with community input, but it wasn't the whole community, correct? It was just a representative of a smaller group of people who developed the diversity, equity, inclusion resolution. It wasn't part of like a massive go out and talk to the whole community, which is what a strategic plan would do.
Right, it was not to that level or that scale. It was a work group that was pretty robust, but representative of multiple voices that were either appointed or went through some level of a process to designate them as the representative.
And what year was that?
In?
And did that follow? Did, did that follow a, an instant that, what, what was the catapult for that resolution?
I'll say that we intended to do it in 2018, 2019, started working, kind of putting together a framework of how would we go about doing that, and then just kind of dealt to the back burner with the pandemic. And then George Floyd was murdered. That brought it back to the forefront for the legislative action and policy committee to, sorry, legislative action, community engagement committee to double our efforts and bring that back to the front.
I'm just going to make a comment or, given, given that context, that I didn't, thank you for that context, I'm, I have a question that would be, does that resolution serve our district? Does keeping that resolution in place serve the district? Is it something that is a source of division or?
So, so here's where I'm going to keep us in scope of, of that. Yeah, we were using that as context for.
Understanding.
Yeah.
No, and, and, you know, again, like, just to even go forward as trying to figure out, is it going to be a future board, or a board topic or not? And also trusting the process of we are trying to, you know, encourage parental involvement, we're, we're working to increase transparency. So, you know, I guess my ask stays and then if we, if we just go with thumbs up, thumbs down, I, I truly believe that the work is in progress. I think, yeah.
And I, and I think everything, when we look at strategy in terms, like, I think everything's on the table, right? So back, just to bring up also.
Yeah.
So I'm looking to direction from board members on if we, if, if, I've heard from Brittany, if we want to ask our superintendent to pursue, bring something like this forward for discussion at this point.
I would like that to happen mostly based upon my review of 102 and 104, our policies that are in place. And they talk about the board reviewing our comprehensive plan and our district's mission every few years. Because I agree with Mary, it's statute. We have to operate in statute. What our policies are in place for. Oh, I briefly, I mean, I read the lines of the resolution that was parental rights resolution and many of the sentences in there are things that I read and many of our policies are ready. I think I would rather have Dr. Thomas bring it forward.
Should we do thumbs again? I think we've heard from everyone except Enrique. No, you didn't. You explained the process to us.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thumbs down. Okay. So at this point, the board, the collective will of the board, majority is to not bring it forward to a study session, but let it come up through community voice and strategic work that we are looking to do in this next year. Right, back to board. Jessica had.
Sorry. I'm sorry. 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 Thank you for keeping me focused. It might have already been established, but even before tonight, looking at the strategic plan and what that looks like and starting that process and having never been through this process yet, in terms of timelines and things like that, and what we talked about, and what we just talked about kind of ladders up under that as well. So it's a little bit, apologies, it's not very clear, but in terms of community involvement, and we talked about that at professional development where, you know, the shared community values and bringing our communities, community together, setting the table, I think is what you, the phrase you used, Dr. Thomas, is setting the table for the revised strategic plan. So I guess my agenda item is looking at that process, setting timelines that I think are already kind of established, but what does that look like? How do we begin this process? What is involved in that process? You know, like we just talked about, what is all involved? The community involvement, things like that. So I don't know if that gets too tactical for a study boards, a board study session or if it's at a later date, but, so I don't know how that works, like I said, having never been through this process. So tell me if I'm ahead of the game or whatever in bringing it to a study.
Are you asking me personally, like?
I'm asking anyone.
Okay. So, so I, I would offer this.
Because it does take time, obviously.
Yeah, I think just listening to the conversation tonight and, you know, my one-on-one with each of you, it's clear that it's time for an opportunity to re-engage our community around our value add as a district and what our goals, aspirations, et cetera, are going to be. That, from my vantage point, that's what I hear enough of, even in conversations with community members. Again, I'm hearing the same, I guess I'm getting validated and my observation is that our community is ready to have conversations about, you know, who we have become in, over the past five years. And again, a lot has changed in this world and we, we have changed too. We haven't been unchanged by what all has happened. I, I would offer this to the board. Studer Education Group that we're currently partnering with has a strategic planning arm to them that actually could be a conversation with the board to understand how, because we've already launched a partnership with them around the language of leadership, around our flag wheel, our focus on an academic scorecard, like a lot of the management work, you all have had a one board work session and they are open and committed to supporting the board. This is also work that they do. So I think to, you know, just think of it as learning a language. I, I'm a little hesitant introducing yet another language to the conversation that we've already begun with an external facilitator that is adding value to our work. I think I heard from you all as well, from your one board development session, that Casey had a good connection and you appreciated the learning you all had that evening. It would be worth the conversation. I, I don't think it's a, you're not committing to anything, but I think that's where we would understand their process for leading through a strategic planning protocol. And if the board is open to that, I could definitely have the strategic division, I don't know if it's Casey or if it's somebody else, that would come in to walk us through. Here, here's what it looks like working with them to move, move through. And, and honestly, it's, you know, I think, I don't know who we used here last time, was it then? Were the team works?
Team works.
There's dozens of them.
There are dozens of them, which I would say, I would, I personally would like to understand the cost because I know it is quite a costly process. And then I'd like to understand two or three other different options that we can take a look at. I mean, if it's already included in our contract with Studer, that would be obviously part of our decision-making process. But I'd like to, I know there's a lot of different boards in the state working on their strategic plan as well.
Right, right.
So maybe that's the, the study session discussion point is considering the options. Okay.
Okay.
Thumbs for good order sake. Okay, and then.
Yeah, so given the, how do I say, the updated data coming Yeah, so given the, how do I say, the updated data coming out of the MCA test scores, I've had some time to analyze them and have some big concerns, particularly with our high school. Our science score is 36.8% proficiency, which is one of my biggest concerns. And I would think, given our focus on academics and given the information of the data that's coming out of the MCA scores, I would love to see a study session just focused purely on academics. Like what do we as a board need to do, whether it's policy changes or procedure changes, that give both our teachers the ability to be effective in their role and our students the ability to be able to achieve to their highest potential? And I think, you know, if the state of the district is in September, correct? When we will be updating our.
I think that was my rough kind of way.
Yeah, when we will be updating our community on what these MCA scores are. And, and it would be, it would be, then we could have a September study session with a focused conversation on academics and what, what do we need to do as a district? Because compared to every district in the South Metro, our high school in particular is at the very bottom as far as scores go. And we just, there's no reason why, the investments that we've made into the, our, our school, our, it's just, we need to, we need to do something differently. So I would personally like to have a conversation at a study session about just fully focus on academics.
Dr. Thomas, I've got a question. I know that you have the state of the, state of schools coming up and your kickoff kind of with the community as we talked about. Obviously, academic baseline and your goals are going to be part of that. But my recollection has been also that the board does get an update with the combination of MCA and FastBridge anyways on a quarterly basis after the first FastBridge comes out, about the same time as the parent teacher. And I do think the FastBridge is a little bit more indicative of where we are compared to last year and stuff like that than the MCA is. That's my opinion. But do you think it's beneficial to do that at that time early or wait for the FastBridge to come out in the first quarter assessment?
I, I think we'd be splitting hairs, honestly. So I, you know, it just, the data that we have, I think, would shape a rich discussion. And obviously, there'll be some data points that we don't have, you know, until the end of first quarter. But what we have, it's clearly launching schools into a school improvement planning process to identify key strategies. I think that type of a conversation, I think is really important to have our administrators here as well, to have a more robust conversation at that strategic level. So, yeah, I mean, if, if that's the will of the board, we could definitely facilitate that kind of, kind of a conversation.
I guess what I'm asking is, is annually, or at least in the first quarter, whatever, we've had those.
We do have, yeah, we do have quarterly data reports that are done at our board business meetings.
Right.
Yes. That's a standing. We introduced that last year.
We used to have it too.
And you had different iterations of it.
Chris Lynn used to do that too. So I guess my question is, is are we better off waiting for that, for the full data to be there, particularly with the FastBridge and your improvement plan with the baselines and our goals into kind of goes step by step? Or do we need to do that, and I'm asking also Lisa this because she asked for it. Is there enough room in a board meeting to do that at a business meeting and get that robust effect? Or should we do it both at the study and the board meeting or a study session and dive down in that whole study session?
Yeah, I guess.
We do, I don't want to see it again and again and again, is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, so.
One, one thought about that, you know, because Lisa honed in on the high school specifically. And one of the things that we are going to be doing for the first time at the high school is utilizing FastBridge with ninth grade this fall. And we wouldn't have the results of that until an October study session. Because that, the window opens about second week of school and is wrapped up in the first week of October typically. That's a quick thought that I have, not that pending that we delay it, but just put that on the table for consideration and discussion as well.
I just don't want to, my personal opinion is I don't want to go through it twice. And if we've got more data later on and we're planning on doing it anyways, like we normally do, then I prefer the full picture. Also knowing that coming across, and actually someone came to my door with a campaign to opt out of MCAs and that's also is a huge impact.
Opt outs don't count against the scores. Just so you're aware that, no, they don't. I got clear direction from MDE and I can forward it to you. So they used to, but they not anymore. My concern is you have kids entering into our high school who are freshmen. If we wait another six months not to make any changes, we are not. We're taking as a board.
We're not, I guess I'm not saying we're, strategies are being implemented starting at the very beginning of the school year at every one of our schools. I think the question is, do, do we want to wait until October for a certain data point to be part of the discussion or not? And I'm saying we can have a discussion, it'll just be a different discussion. We have data that we can have conversations about because schools are setting their school improvement plans to the data that we currently have. We will just have a different data set to include and have a more robust conversation, I know, come October.
Or ish, right around, right around there. So when we had our first quarter report. Which again, our first quarter report historically has almost been a quarter four because we're bringing in the MCAs, which is last year's data.
Relevant to now then.
So, so that is, so our quarter.
Being implemented now, right.
Correct, correct. So that's, that's, so that's, that's what we're engaged in right now as admin.
The work is being done in, that's what I'm hearing you say, is the implementation. And the fruits of our labor will be later, right? They will come. It doesn't mean we can't have a discussion. I'm just not sure how productive, in my opinion, that discussion would be until we have more context as we get deeper into the school year. It doesn't mean the work's not being done, just because we're not, we're talking about it.
So maybe we can hear about it or get an update about it at a, at a study session. That's maybe what I'm, I'm asking for, is that if we can just get an, I mean, academics, given our scores, academics should be a conversation at every board meeting, at every study session. It is, we are at a point in our district where we cannot go lower because we are not in a great space. I don't know if you've had a chance to analyze them, but every MCA score is on MDE right now for us to all analyze.
And it made the newspaper. Yeah, the whole state made the newspaper again.
Right, and we are not in a good space. So if we want to be the premier district. That is not true. So if we want to be a premier district, we have to address this issue. And so I'm just asking, if it's not the will of the board, that's fine. We can wait. But I'm just saying it's an urgent issue in my, in my mind.
Lisa, it's an urgent issue from every, for everyone. My question is, is do we wait till we have the most robust data and put it all together? And then also have our baseline and our goals for this year as we're monitoring it instead of doing it twice without all the data points that we could have? Because I know FastBridge is, like, like we talked about, you've got the MCA which is lagging and you've got FastBridge, which is the data that is actually being used in the data meetings now with the teachers. So they're breaking it down much more granularly and, and doing that all at once. And also for me, it helps put the MCAs in perspective when we compare the different types of scoring against the FastBridge. For me it is.
Wouldn't we have FastBridge from last year that you said? Like you said, you're, you're bringing the data.
Through eighth grade, yes.
Yeah, well, so you could, we could assess.
And we have spring, but we don't have anything, we don't, we can't show our, our growth until our first quarter fall, so.
And since the first quarter fall will probably happen in October, because I think you guys.
I mean, these kids are the same kids.
Yeah, we have fall to spring comparison and to compare the cohort of kids to see, to assess what was our summer lag and kind of where are they starting, we wouldn't have that formative measure yet. So I'm saying. We have data. We, we have data.
We have data.
We, 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 we just have different sets of data at different times. And so we've historically timed our quarterly reports when we had a cumulative amount of data to tell a broader picture. That's what we've done in the past. And if we want to do something different, that, that's what we'll wait to understand what the board wants.
I would like to wait till October to get the FastBridge data. That's just my personal opinion. So I'm not really giving it a thumbs down. I'm giving it a thumbs up, but I would like to, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm patient. Want to see that little chunk. We talk about FastBridge all the time.
And the MCAs were included last time too. Yeah, so, okay.
I don't exactly know if it was a timing or what, does it want to bring it to a work? We want to bring it to a work session, yeah.
I think that was my question, but I don't want to detract from what Lisa's request was. I think she's requesting it right away. And then again, we already have the other one scheduled. And given everything that's on her plate with the audit and everything else and as well as other things that we need to vote on, I would prefer to wait and do it all together. My, my only question is, is would it be better done at a study session and dedicate the study session to go deep dive instead of combining it at the board meeting? Where even though we can do a deep dive, it's a much more formal environment and we don't spend as much time on it.
That's what I was, that's what I was suggesting was a study session. So we're basically talking about September versus October.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the gist of it is.
Are you comfortable with October?
If that's what, if, yeah, I, I would personally rather have it in September. But like you said, Julie, if that's, you know, I'd like to have it. So if it's waiting, if, if the will of the board is to wait until October, I think then I'm fine with that. Yeah, I think that would be wonderful.
I'm comfortable, me personally, with it being in October, a study session versus a board meeting.
I think it should.
To have a deeper dive, but.
That was my recommendation.
Okay. So, so thumbs up for October study session.
Is that, that's the thing over here?
Yeah.
You get, you get another two weeks' time to put it together.
Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll take a look at it. Yep.
All right, other agenda items by board members that they'd like to throw forward. Okay, we will adjourn, study session and transition to closing, but we'll take a quick break at this point.